Having good advice. An inquiry from at least 100 registered voters is present tonight. I call the town meeting of West Boylston of May 19th, 2025 to order. I invite you to rise for a pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask you to remain standing for a moment in silent remembrance of our neighbors and friends who have died since we last met, and our brave men and women serving in the military. Thank you, you may be seated. We have some procedural matters to attend to before we actually get into the warrant. The first issue is, there are a bunch of people in the overflow room, because more than a quorum is here, and there are still people in line, and so they will be going to the overflow room, and so we will need a deputy moderator to monitor that room, take votes, pass questions along. If someone needs to come in and comment, they will facilitate that. We'll try to have a helper for you, we'll try to have a helper for them, right? And at this time, I will entertain nominations for the deputy moderator. Is there any nomination?
I would like to nominate Bob O'Connell.
Whoever seconded, can you wave so that the town clerk can...
That would thank you.
Okay.
Bob, please.
Thank you.
Bob, I want to do it, ready?
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? I will entertain a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
Mr. Frieden has moved, second.
Second.
Ms. Mindersmith, thank you. Nominations, to close nominations, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Click.
I have to go take the vote in the other room.
Sorry, Bob.
I think you should get a circus peanut.
He likes to volunteer, it's fine.
The chief, the assistant chief.
No, the assistant chief.
Nominations are closed. So the nomination is for Bob McConnell. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Be right back.
Why, we don't need this. I have to practice it like a lawyer. Can we let face stand there as an assistant? Oh, she needs to do the presentation. We need to pay back in here for her presentation. How about this is going?
Never one voted aye as well, so I don't have to keep running back and forth, thank you very much.
Mike, please.
I'm sorry?
Mike, for focus, you didn't need to approach.
How's that?
Better.
While the deputy moderator is being sworn, there are other procedural matters that we need to attend to. By the way, the overflow room is watching on closed circuit TV, or some kind of TV, I think it's closed circuit. But the other issue that we have is, you were given, if you're in this room, a clicker. If you didn't get a clicker, raise your hand. I see no hands. That's good. Oh, there's a hand. You didn't get a clicker. Okay? You need a clicker or you need to go to the overflow room? Because the overflow room doesn't have clickers.
She has a card in her hand.
They have the orange cards, and there is a deputy moderator now there, who will be able to count the orange cards when we need to count a vote. So the clickers are new for me too, okay? There are some logistical challenges with having clickers, not having clickers. The orange cards address that, but a question has been raised, do we want to use them? And so I'm going to let you guys say if you want to use them or not.
Yes.
Let's put it to a procedural vote. This is a procedural matter before we get to the actual warrant articles. I will entertain a motion that we use the clickers.
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Phelan, is there a second?
Second.
Too many seconds. Did you second? You did not second.
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Padoni. Any discussion of using the clickers?
Do we use the clicker for the vote?
Huh? Not for this vote? You have to, we have to say we're going to use the clickers before we use the clicker for the vote. So is there any discussion of the motion to use clickers?
I'd like to say yes.
Come up to the microphone, identify yourself with your name and address, please.
My name is David Toppin from 160 West Boylston Street. Some of you may know me as Peter Henderson. I object to the use of the clickers or any kind of electronic voting. These have a little number on the back, they're reporting your number, so they are going to know and have a permanent record of how each of us votes. I do not think that is how campaigning should work. And how, like we've always done for 150 years, get rid of these 50 companies on our clickers. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments from the public?
Yes, further.
I'm sorry, is what true?
The gentleman said, "What's your voting? And so how are you voting?"
No, that is not true. All it's counting is how many yeses, how many nos. They are not associated with anybody. The reason it has the number on the back is to know who has it when they leave. So if you leave with your clicker, we know you have it. When you're voting on here, we don't see anything like that. All we see is a yes and a no.
I was told by one of the election workers that it keeps track of who, but I mean, I guess you are the head election worker, so...
Correct.
Maybe she is correct. I'm still against any kind of electronic voting, and I think we should vote together.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public on using the clickers? Shh, please.
Sandy Miners, 20 Maple Street. If this gentleman is so concerned about using the clicker, he can go to the overflow room where he's using an orange card.
If someone is concerned about that, and you want to turn your clicker in and get an orange card in exchange and go to the overflow room, you are welcome to do so, okay?
That's not, that's not the only issue. It goes into a machine, it goes into a machine, and you don't know what happens to it once it gets there, that's all.
Okay. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. This is a voice vote. All in favor of using the clickers in this room, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it in this room. I'm not sure if they need to vote on that, since they're not using clickers. I guess they do.
Was that for the town to use the clickers?
That's for, this is for tonight. The ayes have it, we'll use the clickers. I know that there's lots to talk about, but if you can keep the chatter to a minimum, it will help the transmission of the sound accurately to the overflow room. So this is one of those, you know, do one to your neighbors, you would have them do... Please try to hold it down if you would, please. All right. We have some sample votes, this is still procedural matters, to test the clickers, okay? I think I'm only taking votes from clickers on this. So first is a survey-type question. Does everyone feel, do you feel, I don't know if everyone feels, do you feel we should continue with the town meeting mailer? You can use your clicker to vote yes or no, please do so now. This is not binding. No, no, this is just testing the clickers. There is not a motion pending. This is a survey. This is a, hey, what do you think? Should we continue using the town meeting mailer? So it's a survey question. It's not binding, you're not deciding policy or expenditures or borrowing or anything like that. It's what do you think?
Vote, please.
If you haven't voted, please vote. You can vote yes, you can vote no. If you don't want to vote yes or no, don't vote. Yes and no are the only choices. Now you can, if you voted yes and you're like, I really wanted to vote no, you can change your mind at any time before I close the vote. I'm sorry?
That means your votes are recorded.
Ah, I'm told that your clicker will tell you when your vote has been recorded. It will say okay in the little box, the little window.
It says three.
So let's give it another 30 seconds so you can get your vote in.
That button, that isn't really there, it works. I have a complaint. Is there a discussion?
No.
Working the ground. Should I show this to Damon? I'm taking my clicker home.
Close the vote. The vote is now closed, you can't change it anymore.
So what's the result? 278 to 64, or, my screen did not show it anymore. I'm a little concerned. Let's try another one.
Do you think town meeting will end by 9:00 PM? I will open the voting. It's not betting. We're not auctioning the ending time. Yes, I think it will end by 9:00? No, I don't think it will end by 9:00. Go ahead and vote. The okay is really little. It's really little, and it's in the upper-left corner of that little box. No, 9:00 PM. Today.
Well, why, just like blood plane things, an hour.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
I did.
Don't need too many.
Baby. I'd already... Baby. Jedi baby. I do listen. I don't know what the hell. I think she's...
Tell me, ask me, I'm not trans, you know.
Okay. Can you ask the circus peanuts? One, please.
All right, 10 seconds. If you want to change your vote, now's your chance. It's gone, and five more seconds. Close the vote, please.
It's supposed to fail.
A majority of you think it will not end by 9:00 PM. Is there a question?
I'd like to raise if we could move Article 9 to the first vote, since we are hour late.
You're out of, I'm sorry, you're out of order. We are still doing procedural things. Thank you. There is no motion pending, the motion was out of order. We have one more. Is this about the administrative thing, using the clickers?
It absolutely is, yes.
Okay.
It's been my experience, that when you use a clicker, you see a tally, a display of the tally, and as the vote slows, the moderator would say, "The vote is slowing." We can see it on the display, and you call for an end of voting. But then we are able to see the actual result of the voting.
You're going to get a...
Is that going to happen tonight?
It's programmed in as pass/fail, and so...
I understand that, but I wanted to see the actual voting displayed, the electronic voting displayed.
I... I don't think we're... We're not showing it.
Right. It usually would run a tally, and the body could see the tally as it's running. As it slowed, the moderator would typically say, "The voting seems to be slowing, we'll close voting," and then we could see the results as a display.
Yeah, we have not set up to do that tonight, that, I guess we can take that under advisement for future meetings.
I think that makes the clicker system a lot more transparent.
Thank you. One more test vote? Or we could skip it?
Skip it.
We'll skip it.
Are you going to, is it take a vote?
No, it's procedural, it's moderator's discretion. Moderator yields to the town.
Mr. Moderator? Question about the clickers. I did not receive an okay on mine, so I was wondering if you could give us a total number of votes, just knowing that my vote wasn't counted twice.
I can't count twice.
No, meaning the first, the both survey questions, right? That Mr. Moderator asked us. So you'd said that you'd received an okay, the person to my left received an okay, I did not at any time, and I was pressing, so I don't know how many other people did not receive an okay.
And I'm doing twice to get an okay.
Oh. I just, we're just wondering how many, listen, the moon landing happened, I'm not a conspiracy theorist. I just, it's just a matter of making sure that votes are getting tallied.
Let's do another test. I was happy to yield, but if it's not working...
Are you sitting in the auditorium? Yes.
Sure. Are you sitting in the auditorium? Or standing? Are you in the auditorium? Vote now, please. Okay, it shows and then it disappears, if you don't see it...
You have to wait for it to open.
It may flash and disappear, folks, sorry. I'm hearing a comment, just hold the button down. That seems to work.
So you should, your totals should match how many clickers you give out.
Question?
Mr. Moderator, just, we had to press ours twice in order to get it to show the okay, just heads up.
Yes, you're not voting twice.
But yeah, it's almost like you have to press it once to enter it and once to send it. I don't know, it seems, you had to double-click it in order to get it to go through.
Okay. Do not worry about voting too many times, you can't, okay? So if you do not think that your vote is registered, press it again and make sure that it's registered, okay? Moving on from this procedural matter.
Does the total match?
Yeah, how many people clicked yes?
278, so far.
How many people are in this room?
Here you go.
How many of these will give up?
A minute.
400.
So all 278 of 400 people, follow that to 20.
I'm not, I'm not sure how many people turned it back in to go next door, at least anyone who's 400.
Okay.
If we're off 100 clicks, we got it.
So we're missing 100 votes. as 100 votes are missing.
I'll take that as a motion for reconsideration.
Motion for reconsideration, thank you.
Is there a second? Okay, discussion. One comment is, it looks like there are 100 votes missing.
Yeah, we, I mean, here's the, here's, here's an example, and this is basic push-a-button and get a yes, and we're missing 100 and something votes. So if you want to trust your town...
Maybe not everybody votes?
And your vote, maybe not. Is there 100 people in here who didn't vote? Raise your hand if you didn't vote.
Okay, that's out of order, especially for someone who's concerned about knowing how everybody votes.
Please raise your hand. I don't care, I don't care how you vote. Vote your conscience, but, so let's take another vote on whether, it's going to be a voice vote, maybe I lose again, but hey.
So there's a motion and a second, we're discussing, should we reconsider and vote this again? Any further discussion? Okay, so the motion to reconsider will be to, go ahead, come on down. No, the fellow behind you.
Oh. If I make a suggestion, when people press the button, if they don't see an okay signal, they can raise their hand to signal to the room that they haven't seen their vote count. And if we still have missing votes, at that point, we can tally the missing vote and maybe reconsider the motion at that time.
Well, it's, okay. As a procedural matter, I will take that as a suggestion.
You have to delay from when you press the button, if it's okay, you should register right away.
Thank you. If you have something to say, please come to the microphone, we don't want to miss your wisdom, so, I saw her first.
I defer.
Hang on.
I defer. Oh my goodness. Is that the question, if we're taking care of kids? I don't know. I'm wondering if the kids are going to freak out.
Over here.
Thank you. So I just want to be sure I understand that we in the audience, are we ever going to see a tabulation of how the votes were cast, since it's not going to be displayed or anything? Like, is there going to be something after this saying, like...
What the count was?
Yeah, what the counts are for each motion, for each question.
I'm going to defer to town clerk on that, but I will note that whenever we have a voice vote, you don't know what the vote, what the quantity was. You know, it passed or it failed, or maybe we have to hold up cards. So if we, when we hold up cards, we count the cards and then you get a count. But for most things, we don't use the cards, it's a voice vote, and nobody knows, was it, you know, 250 to 100, or was it 350 to 50?
I understand that, but the concern, and I work in risk management, so the concern is that, the chain of data, right? Like, we want to be able to see what the results of the data are, since it's not something that we can just hear or see visually, and last year, I know that we used the counters a handful of times, it wasn't just, you know, it's not an obscure possibility to do that.
Okay.
Your mind now, Steven, get her name or address for the record.
Thank you. Could we get your name and address just for the record, so that...
Jessica Bonneville Drive.
We are pursuing a way to show this live to the, to the town meeting, so I will update you.
Mr. Moderator, to the town clerk, it just looks like the last vote wasn't cleared out yet, so if we're going to use the clickers to vote on whether or not we're going to use the clickers for the meeting, we probably want to clear the vote.
I haven't closed the vote, so thank you.
So there's a motion for reconsideration.
There is a motion for reconsideration. Is there any further discussion of the motion for reconsideration? All right, so close the last sample question. Close the vote on the last sample question.
Open meetings. Can I yell about the open meeting or not? I'm just practicing.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we take a vote on the clickers and to not use them at this meeting, because obviously we don't have it worked out.
Thank you, there's still a motion to reconsider pending, and so I think you're restating your motion. I will ask you to sit down if you don't have something new to add to the conversation now. All right, any other discussion of reconsidering the use of clickers? I think as a procedural matter, it's safer to take a voice vote on using the clickers, because there are concerns about using the clickers. Give me a second.
Are you trying to hack the clickers? Is that what you're trying to do right here?
Right here.
She's trying to hack the clickers. Did you plug this in? You shouldn't plug this in.
But he needs to see, I really want to call you and...
All right, so rule is, don't take me seriously, just about ever.
All right, since we've effectively reconsidered, I'm going to treat this vote as, should we use the clickers or not, okay? So I think otherwise, there's a lot of, another additional layer of complexity, and we've probably had enough complexity already. So treating this as, a yes vote will be, use the clickers. A no vote will be, don't use the clickers. Is that clear?
No.
All, it's not clear.
No, it isn't clear, but I think one of yours is.
All in favor of using the clickers, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, we'll use the clickers.
Let's get it going.
No, it was not close enough to need a count.
Go to the cafeteria. Go to the cafeteria.
Fine. The ayes have it, we will use the clickers. As you can tell, there are often procedural matters that need to be determined. I usually will refer to town meeting times or council, as, as may be needed. But we don't have rigid rules of procedure. I will try to end debate at an appropriate time. And the matters before us have been put on the warrant by your town officials and interested citizens. They deserve your consideration. If you have a mobile device, please silence it now. An emotion is now in order to waive the reading of, of the warrant and the return of service thereto, and to refer to it as subject matter only. Is there such a motion? I'm sorry if you can waive. And second? Second, Mr. Phelan, thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, we have to... Old habits are hard to break.
Do you have this in? Listen, we, we need to take a vote on waiving, no, waiving the reading of the warrant.
Sorry, your aye will not count, because you have to use a clicker, because we voted to use the clickers. Old habits thy heart, I'm sorry, please bear with me. Benny? All right, all in favor of waiving the reading of the warrant and referring to it as subject matter only, please click. And if, oh, and if you say, if you don't, then just vote no. I'm not going to ask two separate questions, sorry. I'm new at this too. I've been known at 12 years, but I'm new at this part. Keep pushing it till you get an okay. The vote is slowing. 15 seconds, please. You want to change your vote? This is your chance. All right, let's close the vote. The ayes have it. We don't have a way to show you the number of... No, I can't say it, I'm sorry. It, it is a matter of the way that the software is set up. All right. Technology is great, except when it doesn't work. And we can't, since we can't provide the transparency, we're going to need to do voice votes. I'm sorry. I, I would, I would defer to what you want. Matters of fundamental fairness require more transparency, and hearing the number of ayes and nays is, will be more transparent, so that you don't wonder, did, did some technological thing stop my vote from counting? So, we will need to... They're going to need to hand out cards. So... Well, we've tried using them, and there's enough, there's enough doubt that transparency requires that we not use them.
I, I think the idea is, use these in lieu of the cards.
Huh?
I think the idea being expressed was, why can't we use these?
Oh, use these as cards?
Yeah.
We, you don't have to have cards, you could use your hands. I will entertain whatever comments are coming from the public.
This is related to the order that we're voting on? This is related to the order of articles that we're voting on? All right, now that I'm eating the microphone.
Yes, eat the microphone.
Great. Cam, David Ashwell, 139 Woodland, can we adjust the order of what we were voting on tonight to move Article 9 up to the first item, as we are now an hour and a half past the start time?
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Hang on. There's a motion before us to advance Article 9 to now. Discussion, please. It's been moved and seconded, discuss.
I think that's a great idea, and I have an amendment to add to the article, but I am bringing it with me, so I'll be right back.
Well, gentlemen, wait.
The amendment is not in order until the article is actually pending.
Simply based on time, we should move forward.
But my motion to amend 9B is going to affect 9A, so...
When we get 9A on the floor, that might be, that might be appropriate. Right now, we're figuring out, do we want to take 9 now?
All right, Sandy Miners, 20 Maple Street, I oppose the reordering of these articles. I oppose this, that because any article that is voted on can be retaken up after everybody leaves. So all you parents who are here to vote yes for Article 9 and then leave, we may be stuck with a no vote if you leave.
So, the procedural way to guarantee that that doesn't happen, June Humbert Ward, 15 Kings Mountain Drive, the procedural way to make sure you can lock in a vote and be sure that the vote that you were present for stands and doesn't get changed when you walk out the door, is to make a motion to reconsider. The body will only entertain one motion to reconsider an article. So that motion to reconsider, if it went your way, you would vote no on reconsidering, and that would lock in the article. So there is a procedure for that. So I do support advancing, given the late hour and the late start, so that the people here can conduct the business that they came to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from the public? Hearing none. We will take a voice vote, and we'll get a voice vote from the other room as well, on advancing Article 9 to the, to be discussed first. All in favor of advancing Article 9, please say aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, in here. Check with the deputy moderator. The ayes have it, Article 9 is advanced. So, we are going to hand out orange cards. That famous low-tech solution. But I don't want to wait till the orange cards are handed out, because that's for voting. We can still discuss. There'll be a presentation, there's an opportunity to present. So Article 9, Fiscal Year 2026, Omnibus Budget Appropriations Article, is there a motion?
I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $31,640,900 necessary to defray the expenses and charges of the Town of West Boylston in fiscal year 2026, the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. All as set forth in the budget column headed Motion A, Town Admin Recommended Budget FY2026, including the costs of public education, debt and interest payments, providing municipal services, and reduction of the tax rate to be funded as follows. $30,624,950 to raise and appropriate. $61,950 from WBPA receipts reserved. $630,000 from ambulance receipts reserved. $16,000 from Watuset EMS fund. $308,000 from free cash, for a total of $31,640,900. Provided, however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of a Proposition 2.5, so-called override question, appearing on the June 3rd, 2025, annual town election ballot, allowing the town to raise the additional sum of $725,000 outside the otherwise applicable levy limit.
Second.
Thank you. I have a point of order for you. There's a preamble to the Motion A, and I don't think that there's been an explanation of the article as a whole, and you've, all you've done is move Part A. And I think that this needs some explanation. So, I'll invite that explanation or presentation at this time.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
No.
Okay, is that better? Okay, I'm Ray Burcall, Chair of the Finance Committee. We had conducted a series of three informational sessions over the last two weeks, but probably less than 10% of this body has attended those, so we've prepared an abbreviated version of that presentation, just to try to lay some groundwork for this article. Excellent. So, on this year's warrant, you're going to present it with two budget options, one with and one without an override of $725,000. Why? Simply, growth of expenses are outpacing growth in revenue, a trend that is expected to continue through the near future. Unfortunately, maybe not just in the near future. Right now, if we just take a look at the surrounding area, and take a look at the relative tax rates, we are just above the median, and you can see for yourself the various towns here. So, the group average is 1342, we're just above that. So, why? Well, revenue growth is pretty minimal. One-time funds that we've been using over the past few years from COVID-19 have expired. New growth is less than it was last year, and we're limited to basically the prop 2.5 growth year over year. Looking at the expense side, the schools have had pretty much flat state funding, and their growth has been typically around 2% per year, and that includes $545,000 worth of layoffs that they put in place this year. The obligations from non-negotiable portions of the budget saw a $645,000 increase. This is for things like payment on debt, principal, and those kinds of things. So it's not something that is, something we can adjust. We've also had a restructuring in the fire department. Our former on-call structure was no longer working, so we've been adding fire personnel, and that's accounted for some of the expense growth. So if you don't take anything else away from tonight's presentation, I really want you to focus on this slide, because it really summarizes about a dozen slides in one. So, two sides. Our revenue, which is dominated by Proposition 2.5, will see about $530,000 increase in our revenue. There are other smaller revenue line items, but this is the dominant one by far. On the expense side, we have the non-negotiable funds, again, the, the same things I was talking about, debt payment, retirement assessments and the like, will amount to $645,000. And if we take a look at salaries of all departments, this is school, town side, this is everybody, we have about $17 million in salaries. And even though we've negotiated very good contracts with a 2% to 2.5% COLA, when you fold in step increases and lane changes, it averages about 3.5%. So another $600,000. So, at, at any point in time in the near future, we're looking at each year presenting a $700,000 additional deficit. There's not much we can do with that right now, other than either cut severely or pass an override. So, we brought a override to last year's meeting. We were looking for a five-year override for roughly $3.8 million, and it failed convincingly. Why? Voters didn't want to agree to a scope of more than one year. It's everybody's right to feel that way. The general sentiment is that the, the public would lose some control over the budget oversight process, and that ultimately, it placed too much control in the hands of administration as to budget priorities for too long a period of time. We heard it, we've changed the approach this year. So, we have two scenarios that we're putting before you for vote tonight. That doesn't mean it's the only ones we looked at. So the Finance Committee undertook a fairly extensive review of all of the town's budget lines that had sufficient funds in them to make a material impact in the $725,000 deficit we have. We've looked at reserve funds, we would exhaust those, terrible idea. We looked at more cuts to schools, we looked at eliminating the senior center and library, tripling of bag fees, eliminating shifts of fire and police. We looked at deeper cuts into individual departments. These were all going to have terrible consequences. And as, as a group, we thought none of these were appropriate to try to bring forward. So, the two motions. Proposition 2.5 override is Option A, which is what's on the floor at the moment. And Option B is a service and budget cut approach to balance budget. Includes the elimination of your current curbside trash pickup. Very important, we'll, we'll touch on that more. And there are additional reductions in other departmental budgets. So what does it mean? We're looking for $725,000. It means we've got to pay for it, so you'll have an additional property tax liability. It doesn't correct the underlying structural operating deficit, so another override is likely. And it does include the existing... likely, and it does include the existing school staff layoffs. So what do you get? Well, you'll get continuation of the weekly trash pickup, very limited service cuts, and again postponing the structural deficit. As far as what it will cost you? Next slide. So the average home value in town is about $520,000. The additional tax you would pay is $239 on that average home. You can assess for yourself where you fall into these tiers. So, Option B, there's basically two parts to this. There's a section of additional town cuts and the elimination of the trash budget. So looking at the additional cuts, we're talking about taking out a police cruiser, reducing the number of fire department shifts, an additional $42,000 from the schools, cutbacks at the library, veteran services, and on and on. So everyone feels a little bit more pain than they already have. Defunding trash was the other half of this. It would generate by itself about $437,000 worth of savings, which is the net of the $652,000 that the current contract would cost, less the $215,000 we'd get in bag revenues that would be foregone. So, why are we proposing this, or why does the town administrator propose this? It is the cleanest, simplest thing to do. It would result in no layoffs or layoff expenses for fiscal '26, and minimal impact on town departments and public services. Cons, next slide, are substantial. Overall, it's going to increase the cost to each individual taxpayer by about three times. It might seem like an odd combination. It would help us balance the budget from this appropriation, but you individually as homeowners are going to pay probably close to $800 a year versus the $250 you're currently paying. And again, keeping in perspective, the override would cost about $240 for the average home. So, take that under advisement. And it would also require that each house engage a private trash hauler that would pick up typically trash weekly and recycling every other week. So, all that said, what does the vote look like? Well, if you want to support the override, warrant Article 9A, you would vote for both the override budget 9A and for the non-override budget 9B. Then again, on June 3rd, with the town election, you would vote in favor of the override. So, why both 9A and 9B if you really only want to support the override? Well, we don't know it's going to pass at the ballot, so if we pass it here at Town Hall and it fails on the ballot, we don't have a budget unless we have a ballot. So, if you're interested in supporting the override, vote for both 9A and 9B. If you prefer the service cut budget, well, you'll vote against the override budget 9A and for the non-override budget 9B, and vote against the override question on the ballot on June 3rd. And in this scenario, you would absolutely have to engage a private trash hauler, preferably before June 25th, which is when the current trash budget expires. If you don't want to support either of these budgets, well, this puts the town in serious limbo because there is no budget. We must have a budget to be able to continue operations. A special town meeting would need to be called to consider an alternate budget before June 25th, or we'll start losing services. And if that doesn't happen, none of the services in town that you're paying for would be available, put simply. Public safety, trash pickup, other services. And town residents would need to be, make at least interim arrangements until a budget is passed to take care of their trash. What about next year? This is not going to be a surprise based on what you've heard so far. This override budget is a band-aid. It'll take care of this year and this year alone. We expect probably something in excess of $700,000 deficit next year. Because the underlying expense growth outpacing revenue is going to continue. So, we anticipate an override request next year as well. And one thing I would just mention to go along with this, if you, if you take a look at what inflation has meant, even if you use Social Security as a reference point, they've allowed cost of living adjustments of as high as 8.5% over the past few years. So this is, we're simply out of balance. Prop Two and a Half by itself cannot take care of the additional expenses that we're seeing as we grow. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further presentation on this? Go ahead.
Is this any better?
Yes.
So, I'm Heather Butler, I'm your new town administrator. I've been here about 34 days. It's been a whirlwind of getting up to speed and understanding your, your budget and the issues therein. And I really appreciate the Finance Committee's presentation. I think they've done a tremendous job of taking an awful lot of information and paring it down into some really good informational slides. But I want to flip the switch on this, on this conversation. Just bear with me, I think we've all seen enough PowerPoint slides through the public hearings and the various other meetings to come up to this. So we're going to just take a look at some pictures that I found on the various socials, the, the socials that, look at the positive side of things. Small town, big heart, right? That's, that's your motto? Right? That's your motto. So, Faye, if you want to go ahead and run through those for me, thank you. I want to remind us of what you're all voting on tonight. You've heard-
It's out of order. This is a presentation by a town officer. Go ahead.
And it's also very short. We have heard so much about how government has grown too big, and we need to find ways to cut it to fit with expectations, and if that's your position, I understand it and I respect it, I really do. None of this is an easy conversation, and there are merits to all of your, all of your concerns and all of your questions, and I'm here to try to answer those and respond to those the best way I can. But for those of you who are a maybe, please consider that funding the budget presented in Motion A allows your town to continue to offer the level of services that you've come to expect. Your town officials and employees are very engaged in your community, as evidenced by the photos we're seeing on the screen. They show up to do the work to provide you safe roads, infrastructure, public safety, libraries, senior, veteran services, all of the things. And I know I'm new, but it did not take me long to see that your community is very special, and I can see how much you enjoy living here, and that you appreciate that you are a small community with a big heart, and you've come together in all of the good times, and this is a really challenging time now, and whatever you decide, we will, we will work with, we will do our best. But as a newcomer, I hope that you'll support the budget that allows me to continue to do my job to support your staff and your officials and do what you brought me here to do, which is to administer your town. Unfortunately, that does take resources, it does take money. I understand that an override is a hard decision to make, and I just ask that you, maybe if you're a maybe, that you just kind of remember what you're here, this is what your budget supports. It's these moments, it's these services that are what's reflected in the budget. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. This should be in your packet, a budget sheet, looks kind of like an Excel spreadsheet printed out. And so, under the Motion A, or Part A, I'm just going to go through the departmental headings and so that you know what the numbers that are associated with this budget. Moderator: $51. Select Board: $10,305. Town Administrator: $214,350. Finance Committee: $32,000. Town Accountant: $193,339. Town Audit: $45,000. Assessors: $111,700. Treasure Collector: $226,500. Town Council: $85,000. Data Processing: $159,723. Town Clerk: $112,160. Elections and Registrations: $24,950. Conservation: $1,800. Planning Board: $6,0240. ZBA: $3,000. Public Safety Headquarters: $34,535. Facilities Management: $181,756. Town Hall Building: $62,895. Printing Town Report: $1,200. WB Public Access: $61,950. So total general government: $1,568,464. Continuing on. Police: $2,015,455. Fire: $1,757,157. Public Safety Communications: $259,965. Building Inspector: $150,950. Sealer of Waits: $5,749. Emergency Management: $13,000. Animal Control: $27,693. Total Public Safety: $4,229,969. Streets and Parks: $1,148,67. Snow Removal: $241,000. Street Lighting: $37,388. Trash Removal and Tipping: $652,527. Total Public Works: $2,078,982. Board of Health? There is no line, sorry, zero. Counsel on Aging: $162,168. Veteran Services: $78,100. Total Human Services: $240,268. Library: $548,653. Celebrations: $1,700. Total Culture and Recreation: $550,353. Debt Service: $890,848. Intergovernmental: $9,264. Employee Benefits Risk Management: $7,356,357. ESCO Lease Payment: $278,981. And the total in this last other category is $8,535,450, for a grand total of $31,640,900. So those are the actual numbers behind this Budget A that has been moved. Town Boards and Committees, any recommendations or endorsements?
Select Board endorses-
Thank you. Thank you, Finance.
Solid Waste Advisory Team endorses-
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Comments and questions from the public? Single lines at each microphone, no pushing, and if someone in the overflow room has a question, if you can write it down and send it to us, that's great. If you want to come up here in here and stand in line at the microphone, you can do that too. Go ahead, Ms. Penoni.
I believe the school committee also endorsed this article. I don't know if someone, I can't do it for you, so if a member wants to say that, sorry.
The school committee endorses the article.
Thank you. No, no problem. Over here. Go ahead and step forward if you're going to comment, over here. Name and address, really loud for the town clerk, please.
Adam Brusso, 24 Linden Street. Lived here for 13 years, I got two kids in the school system. Last year I felt the five-year override was a bit overreaching, seemed like it was a Band-Aid to cover up mismanagement of this town's budget. I'm not happy teachers were let go, but I couldn't vote yes. This year, someone had the sense to make it a one-year increase. I'm skeptical that the budget could be cut in other places from this, other than the school and trash services, despite the arguments that it's impossible. But our kids' education future continues to be threatened, forcing us to make this difficult decision again. If we allow our teachers to be let go, it will adversely affect our kids, community, and town. I also don't want to pay more in taxes, but I'm willing to join together with this community, bear this burden together, and give our new town administrator a chance to pull us out of this mess. West Boylston parents, we need to step up, and I'm voting yes. I encourage my friends and neighbors to do the same, please.
Thank you.
Kelsey Hoag, 29 Scarlet Street. Mr. Moderator, one point that I have not heard brought up about the difference between Motion A and Motion B is that the impact to our public infrastructure from having multiple trash providers in town instead of one. It is my understanding that in neighboring towns with, with private trash, there are as many as three or four different providers who will then be rolling trash trucks through the town, causing increased wear and tear on our roads. I would ask the DPW director, is there any merit to the fact that having potentially three or four times as many trash trucks driving through the roads is going to increase our budget in that manner?
Taking the question. Is there anyone from the town, including the DPW, that could address this issue?
Yes, you're correct. Multiple trash, trash companies coming in will definitely affect the roads immensely. Right now, we're handling the trash company we have now, and they're doing a pretty good job, and we're not having too much of a problem. But other companies, you just don't know what you're going to get.
Thank you. Next? No, you were up here before they were, actually.
My name is John Lukach, I'm at, oops, yep. My name is John Lukach, I'm from Angel Brook Village. Quick introduction, before moving to West Boylston six years ago, I was an elected town meeting member in Shrewsbury for over 20 years, so I learned a lot about overrides and the powers of town meeting. During those years, I opposed almost every operating override question, so I think you know what that tells you a little bit about me. First, I want to make a correction, though. At the informational meeting last Wednesday, a town official claimed that operational budget overrides are not permanent. Effectively, they are. Operational budget overrides increase the town levy limit permanently. The only way to eliminate such an increase would be for town meeting to approve an operating budget underwrite, which would also have to then be approved in a townwide vote. And how likely do you think that would be? Okay, so what about the budgets in front of us tonight? The budgets presented tonight show the town officials recommended appropriations for each department, but town meeting could change by amendment the dollars for any department budget. So for example, town meeting could restore the trash budget in Motion B by removing, offsetting dollars from other departments. I am not suggesting that. I am not suggesting that. Okay, trying to do so would be chaotic. But more importantly, while town meeting can change the appropriate dollars for each department, town officials do not have to spend those amounts. They, while town meeting could appropriate them, they don't have to spend them for what we tell them to spend it on. They could choose not to spend those kinds of amounts. So, and also, since the town administrator has said that failure to pass the operating budget override will prevent her from negotiating a new trash contract, if true, town residents would have no town-wide trash pickup sponsored by the town starting this July, as already been mentioned. Now, I think that trash pickup is a service that must be provided on a townwide basis since it provides town-wide benefits. As such, at least a portion of the cost of this service should always be paid out of the town budget, which is, well, which under, if Motion A doesn't pass, that would go away. Passing both budgets tonight and then having the proposed operating budget override passed by a townwide vote will guarantee that trash collection will continue in town under the current arrangement for one, but only one year. So I will reluctantly vote in favor of both tonight. However, what town officials are providing to, are proposing tonight is only a temporary fix to the problems of funding trash service. Some of these same town officials have stated that next year, at the May 2026 town meeting, they intend to zero out trash service in the town budget and transfer those funds to other departments. This would be legal, since the funds from an operating budget override for a specific purpose no longer have to be used for that same purpose after the first year. Instead, town officials are apparently planning to remove trash from the town budget entirely and have residents pay a monthly bill for trash services, similar to the current monthly bills residents get for water, sewer, et cetera. This is what I object to. The town is being asked to approve an operating budget override whose primary purpose is to fund the budget for trash services. Over half of the $725,000, that's in Motion A, is for, is to be able to continue trash services, okay? But they are already planning to use these funds next year for other purposes, and then bill residents for 100% of the cost of trash service. This sounds too much like a bait and switch to me, and I think that is really what the most objectional part about this is. So after tonight, the bigger issue will be, are town residents going to let town officials play this game next year or not? And that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Over here.
Gary Peterson, Prospect Street. Last year, we were given a printout of, from the Department of Revenue, state of Massachusetts, listing 12 towns in central Massachusetts. West Boylston was on that list. We, in the column, on the income per capita, we are at almost the lowest. We are third from the bottom. Our residents' income per capita is $39,325. The second column, average tax bill, as a percentage of their income, we lead the pack. We're at 17.56% of the average resident's income is now being spent on property taxes without an override. I spoke, I was at both of the, two of the three informational meetings, and spoke at the last meeting on this, and was told very nicely that, well, we have a lot of DCR property in town, we don't have a lot of industrial property. That has nothing to do with these numbers. These are humans. This is big town, small heart, small town, big heart. You've got to have a heart. We're extracting the most amount of money per capita. There are other towns that have a lot more money, or people with more money than we do in this town. I'm not saying we're a poor town, but we're at the bottom. Lester and Clinton are the only two below us, with everybody else locally here above us. So I can't in good heart ask my neighbors to help with this. We need to cut. We need to cut things. We have too much. We need to cut, even though it's not too much, we need to cut something. We've got to get rid of this. We can't keep putting the burden on the taxpayers. That's it for that part of it. The other, I went to the meetings, and this override, as this gentleman just stated, is going to be to keep trash for one year. After one year, it goes away. We are paying for trash next year, for sure, one way or the other. And they're going to go for another override budget next year, so even more money. Whether you're a junior or a senior in town, when is enough going to be enough? You know, I have an issue with that. I don't understand why, you know, we can't try to cut more. We've got to cut. You know, whether it's trash removal, whatever it is, we have to cut. And I know you want to start the fund, to fund trash and pay, but we're still paying. If we pay, if they eliminate it now, we pay the $800 per person now, it's going to go away next year. We're going to be paying on our own. The homeowner, depending on the size of your house, within two to three years, by cutting it now and paying now, you're going to come out even. Because you're only going to have to pay that $800 this year. You're going to pay it going forward. However, it doesn't make sense. Long-term, if you plan on living here for more than three years, you're going to be paying more money. Bottom line.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, one other quick question. Is there any plan on a buyback for the bags if this fails?
Hold on. Is there someone on a town board or committee who knows the answer to that?
There's been no discussion, Christina Pedone, Chair of the Select Board, there's been no discussion on a buyback plan. But I'll note it. Oh, sorry, Heather. Yep, I was going to say, I have to get.
All right, so noted. Go ahead.
Me?
Yep.
My name is Dave Toppin, 160 West Boylston Street, and as Gary just eloquently said, this, and the gentleman who was formerly from Shrewsbury, this does not fix the problem. They're going to come back next year, they're going to have $750,000 more in the budget next year already because of the override, because they changed the floor. And then it'll be another 2.5% on top of that, or whatever they want, on top of that. And it's, they're just going to keep, they're just going to keep asking for more. Expenses need to be cut. The government, your government, my government, is lying to us. I went to two of the finance committee meetings, they had slides up saying that the school budget was cut 2%. The school budget is $300,000, and I'm not even making that number up, it's exactly $300,000 more, the proposed budget, more than 2025. And it seems to me like they just kind of made up that number and threw $300,000 on top of it. But the school is not being cut. The school, I think they could probably find another 2% in their budget from last year. I think they could probably find it to cut it. I think any government organization, and probably any family, could find 2% to cut out of their budget. Fiscal year 2026, they're proposing $14,437,414. Fiscal year 2025, the budget was $14,137,414. They won't let us look at the school budget. From what I understand, you cannot see the budget. We just get that $14 million figure and say, hey, pass it. Without that increase, we could fund the trash. And I am going to propose an amendment to Article B that would keep the budget as it was in 2025, add 2.5%, and keep your trash. And I hope you vote yes for my amendment.
When we get there.
Excuse me?
When we get to B, yes.
Well, I need to make it known that it's going to happen.
And that's fine. Telling them your intent is exactly the right approach. Thank you.
Okay, so I will be proposing that amendment, but it will level fund the budget, add 2.5% and make sure we keep trash. And then they can figure out the budget after that. They're looking for $700,000 more in benefits and insurance this year? I mean, that's insane. They want to get rid of our trash so they can keep their benefits, basically.
That sounds like a good stopping point.
Move it along. Next.
Vanessa, I like my politicians to not lie to me when I ask them a direct question, too. Vanessa had the signs removed, she told me it wasn't.
I did. It was on town property.
And you lied to me when I asked you about it.
You're out of order, sit down, please. Over here.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Yes. Nicole Redman, 72 Malden Street. I feel like I have a bit of a unique perspective, because I have two kids in the system, I'm also a teacher here at this school. And I'm hearing people talk about cuts. Let me tell you what is being cut. My job. I will not have a job here next year, which really doesn't matter to any of you, but here's why it actually does. In the schools, I'm going to have to take this off, I'm too short, sorry. In the schools, we will lose class size. So for example, in the middle school, where we currently have four classes per grade, it will go down to three. Your children's class will go from about 20 to 25. That may not seem like a lot unless you've been in a classroom and you know what it's like. And how hard it is to try and give every child the absolute best when there are more of them. Your special education teachers are cut by about a third already. This is regardless of what happens tonight, okay? We have more and more children coming up on IEPs, 504s, kids who need services, and our department, that department is being cut significantly. That is not, of course, going to be it, but this is a big deal. We're a small system, and to lose nine people is a big deal. And it's important that we value the people that we have, because when teachers get that message, and staff and administration get that message, that it's not important to us as a town, that we don't value education, they don't want to stay. And we're going to chase good teachers away as well. Additionally, if we want, we do, of course, accept a number of students from school choice from other communities. Those towns provide the funds for those students to come to this school, and if we need to rely on that or use that money, we're going to want to make sure that these schools are attractive to those students and that they want to come and fill those spaces. They're saying that we need more cuts. We have cut a lot. We're not going to have a late bus next year. We're going to be missing a number of teachers. Certain courses are going to be cut. And that's just here. I'm not as familiar with what's going on at Major Edwards, but I know that they are also very cramped and in need of a lot over there. If you choose not to vote for this, even if you don't have children in the system, potential families who are the ones who are buying homes right now and moving into town will not be as impressed with our town, will not choose to move here, and your home values will also not be as high as you may want them. So I don't think it's fair to say that we need cuts, because we're already cutting so much. And I hope that you will consider that education is not just for those of us who have kids in the system, but it's an important value for the whole community.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Lissa Ashwell, 139 Woodland Street, and thank you for the round of applause for our teacher who lost her job. We appreciate the work she's done. While I, too, wish that there was something else that could be cut, our many committees have made it clear that they support this, and that that's not true. And so unless we're suggesting that everyone on all of our committees is liars and padding their pockets for their volunteer positions, I think maybe we should listen to the sound of reason. I am here in support of the override. A quick note that I wanted to point out for those interested, in the potential consideration of this override not passing, I looked today into the cost of trash hauling from my address in town. Several companies said they were unable to give me a quote because we're still under contract with a hauler. But I was able to talk to Waste Management, and their quote for a can only with weekly pickup and no recycling was $93 a month. So that comes to $1,118 a year. To me, approving the override seems like the most logical and economical choice, and I hope that you guys agree tonight. Thank you.
I'm Sandy Mindersma, I'm at 20 Maple Street. I have two questions. One, doesn't the Board of Health have to approve all trash haulers before residents can make contracts with them should the override fail?
Is there a town official or committee member who knows the answer to that?
That, that is correct. The Board of Health issues permits for trash haulers for the town of West Boylston.
Okay, and so if this fails on June 3rd, we're going to have 24 days, no, I can't math, 22 days to get trash haulers approved and contracted so we can get our trash picked up, right?
Well, there's a possibility that there are already private haulers that are not associated with the town's contract, that are already approved by the Board of Health, because not everybody uses the town's trash service. So my expectation is that there are already some that have been through that process.
Okay. It sounds like we're going to be put over a barrel as the former speaker just spoke. The second question that I have is, Mr. Burkhal said that it, should we have, that budget, Motion A, 9A, would have no layoffs. But what we just heard from the lady who was speaking here is that the school department is losing staff. And we, won't we be incurring unemployment expenses then, or is that just within the school budget and therefore not our concern?
No, we would be incurring unemployment expenses.
Okay, that was not made clear. Those are my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Over here.
Good evening, Rich Maher, Superintendent of Schools. For those in attendance, I'd like to provide a little background on the school's budget planning for this fiscal year, which began back in November, with the understanding of the constraints that the town was to be put under this year, with the understanding of the minimal funding coming from the state of about $63,000 in increase from last year, with an understanding of the historic 10-year average of the town contribution to the schools at approximately $300,000. So over the last 10 years, that's the average increase annually that the town provides the school district. So that's how we began our planning. With those constraints, with those things in mind, the last thing we want to do is issue non-renewals to our teachers here. The last thing we want to do is impact class sizes and the quality of education that is provided here. The last thing we want to do is impact the perception of the quality of education that those who desire to come to West Boylston would now view in a different light, a negative light. We currently have approximately 126 students from other districts who come to school here in West Boylston. We turn many away. We only send 30 students out to other districts, which is very low in comparison to other districts. We want to maintain that. Unfortunately, in order to present a balanced budget to the town and to the school committee in earlier this spring, we did incorporate non-renewals to seven non-professional status teachers and two paraprofessionals. For those not in education, non-professional status teachers are those new to the field within their first three years of employment, or in some cases, those new to the district. If you are a teacher in, well, choose a regional, you've been there for 12 years, and you say, I'm going to go to another district because I'm unhappy with what's going here, maybe I'm looking for a change, you could go to another district, but you lose your professional status and that protection that you have. So that's a risk, an unfortunate risk that some take, and it's an unfortunate decision that we needed to make here as a district, was to reduce those staff members to present a balanced budget to the town, and that's what we did. So the gentleman, we did not come up with a $300,000 out of our hand. That is the historic average of a 10-year contribution to the town. We presented a very conservative budget increase, just over 2%. Very, you know, very, very fiscally conservative in this time, with inflation, with another number of capital needs that we have, and we really bent over backwards. We feel terribly impacted that we did impact teachers' professions. We did impact their livelihood by having to let them go. But please keep in mind, we have an elementary school at capacity with class sizes of 25, 26, with no room to move anybody. We've had a middle, high school, special ed department impacted. We've had schedules that have already had to be changed for next year. As Nicole Redman so eloquently put, it's impacting. It's already had an impact, and the cuts are a reality, so please understand that. Thank you.
Walter Bouchard, 311 Maple Street. I just want to really emphasize that there cannot be a bait and switch where if we approve these funds for trash next year, they somehow bamboozle us and tell us that we're going to use them for something else, because we approve these budgets every single year. So if they present a budget that we don't approve of, if they try to pull a bait and switch, it all happens in public and we see it. So if we decide that those funds, we don't agree with how they're going to be used for fiscal year 2027, then we all have the opportunity to be back here next year. for fiscal year 2027, then we all have the opportunity to be back here next year with each other to stop that. So, and just the other thing. The savings represented by having the collective political will to tax ourselves more is $550 per household. So even if we have to, you know, even if we have to come back next year and do another override, we've already saved that $550 this year rather than paying $800 this year or more or, and then $800 the next year and the year after that. That $550 is in our pocket. It's not going away. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Town Administrator, did you want to respond?
I just wanted to affirm what the last gentleman just said, that I have tried through the public information sessions and anybody that has come and visited and talked to me to be as transparent as possible, that there would be a lot of questions and a lot of issues that would have to be talked about in a very public way if we were to consider options to move trash out of your operating budget and into an enterprise fund. In addition to that, that exact article, that question would have to come back to a town meeting to be approved. The town, myself, the select board, the finance committee, we cannot make that decision to make that happen without your authorization. So I just want to be very clear that I am very, I'm trying to be as transparent about those conversations that can and will happen, but it is ultimately you, this body, that will make those decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Norma Chanus. Norma Chanus, 42 Prescott Street. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Solid Waste Advisory Team. We've worked closely with town administrators, select boards, to improve how we handle trash and recycling. In 2009, we helped implement the Pay as You Throw program and we continue to support sustainable, cost-effective waste management solutions. We're here tonight to voice our strong support for the override. Whether trash remains in the town budget or is funded through a different mechanism, what matters most is preserving this essential service. If the override passes, residents will continue to benefit from the negotiated group rate we've secured with our hauler for the next five years. That rate provides reliable service, keeps costs significantly lower than going private. The number you've heard is it can be at least $800 a year. You'll get fewer services and have no protection at all from future fee increases. Several of our neighboring towns are trying to secure similar contracts but are running into resistance because haulers prefer the higher profits of charging house by house. We already have a strong contract in place. Let's not lose it. Please vote yes on the override. It's the best way to protect our trash and recycling services without putting additional pressure on our other critical areas of the town budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burkolt.
Ray Burkolt, 175 Prescott. So I just wanted to respond to a couple of things that were said.
Eat the mic, please.
Sorry. Try that again. Just wanted to respond to a couple of things that were said. First, I want to talk about the benefits that were alluded to as being padded. When you take a look at those, much of them we don't have any control over. The Worcester County Retirement Assessment, we're given a number. There is no negotiation. We have loans that we've taken out, contractually obligated to pay those loans. We have insurance obligations under the various union contracts that we have. And it was implied that those are needlessly generous. Well, I can tell you, the Insurance Advisory Committee has done an excellent job in going through those and actually restructured the benefits program for savings of about $115,000, I think is the number. So embedded in this override is already some cutbacks and other program benefits. So don't leave this meeting thinking there's a lot of padding there. It's as streamlined as we know how to make it. I would also mention here, there's a lot of comments being made about trash. As Norma just said, we're looking at entering into a five-year contract. Town administrators asked for your support so that she can enter into that contract. Exactly how it gets administered is something that you'll have more options for going forward. My understanding is that she'll present an option at the October town meeting as to potentially a different way to handle that. Whether you like it or don't like it, you'll have the opportunity to have direct control over how that's done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Phelan, 101 Central Street. Mr. Moderator, I don't think there's a person in this room that didn't come in here with their mind made up already. And while we could spend the next five hours going back and forth on these articles, I would like to move that we call the question on Article 9A and 9B inclusive with no further debate, discussion, or amendment.
I think your motion is out of order with respect to 9B. Because it's not ending.
I move that we call the question on 9A.
I'm gonna treat that as a motion to end debate. Is there a second? Hang on. All right, I've just confirmed, there's typically no debate on calling the question. So if you're in the overflow room, get ready to vote. This is the motion to end debate. This is not passing the override. This is stopping talking about the override. So, all in favor of ending debate on 9A, the override, please say aye. Opposed? The motion was made. I'm sorry. Please don't take it personally. Procedurally, I believe that's my obligation. I'm gonna check with the deputy moderator to see how the vote went in the other room. Thank you for your patience. There's a lot of turnout. The motion to call a question passes. Debate is ended. We will now vote on 9A, which is the override. In the overflow room, we're about to vote on 9A now. All in favor of passing 9A is moved. Please say aye. Opposed? Okay. I'll check the overflow room. The ayes have it. 9A is passed.
I make a motion to reconsider the vote on 9A.
Okay, there is a motion to reconsider. Narrowly, that motion is, do we want to reopen this? Okay, so, and say, well, maybe we shouldn't have the override. It's not voting down the override. It is, should we reopen discussion? So, you know, we just voted to end discussion. This is, should we start discussing it again and think about it some more? That's what this motion is. It was moved. It was seconded. So, hang on. Okay, so to be clear, the motion that was made was for reconsideration, which is, should we talk about this some more and maybe think about it some more? Or not? And you wanna, so there's discussion of this if you really want to. You can discuss the motion to discuss, okay?
That's why I'd just like to point out that a no vote on this reconsideration motion means you support the override. So it's a little counterintuitive. A no vote means you support the yes vote that we just got.
Is that clear? Okay. Go ahead.
Chris Burglin, Goodell Street. I just want to remind everybody that, oh, Chris Burglin, Goodell Street. I just want to remind everybody that if this motion does pass, I mean, the motion for the override, that we still have to pass this at the ballot box on June 3rd. So please be sure to show up. Thank you.
Okay. So, let's be clear. If you vote yes for the motion that's before us, you're saying what we just voted yes on for 9A, we want to think about that. We want to rethink it. You're reconsidering it. If you're happy with what happened for 9A, then you should vote down the reconsideration and say, "No, I don't want to reconsider it. We decided we're done." Okay? So just want to be clear. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of reconsidering and reopening the discussion on 9A, please say aye. Opposed? That's pretty clear. Let me check the, check the other room. The motion for reconsideration fails. We will not reconsider. 9A was passed. It will stay passed and it cannot be reconsidered again during this town meeting. 9B. Is there a motion?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,725,900 necessary to defray the expenses and charges of the town of West Boylston in fiscal year 2026, the period of July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026. All is set forth in the budget column headed "Motion B: Department Cuts Town Admin Proposed Budget FY2026", including the costs of public education, debt and interest payments, providing municipal services, and reduction of the tax rate to be funded as follows. $29,709,950 to raise and appropriate $61,950 from WBPA receipts reserved, $630,000 from ambulance receipts reserved, $16,000 from Wachusett EMS fund, $308,000 from free cash, for a total of $30,725,900. Provided, however, that this appropriation shall take effect only in the event that Proposition 2 and 1/2 question appearing on the June 3rd, 2025 annual town election ballot to allow the town to raise the additional sum of $725,000 fails and thereby nullifies the vote taken under Motion A.
Is there a second? Thank you. Some explanation or presentation on this? Are you explaining or presenting?
I'll explain. We all need to vote yes as well on this article so that should the election ballot on the override fail, the town would still have a budget to operate on July 1st. So we definitely need to support this. But further, I wanted to make the point, I was standing at the podium when the question was moved. I wanted to point out that the only time a successful override has been made since Proposition 2 and 1/2 came into existence in the early 80s, really, was in 1991 when West Boylston voted a $200,000 override. What that means that is that in 34 years, all your officials have done an incredible job in maintaining all the expenses and maintaining the services. They've lived with that 2 and 1/2% increase each year. They haven't come to you to ask for more. There's been some new growth. There's a little bit of other revenue. But basically, they've been delivering you such responsible budgets, I don't know in the Commonwealth what other community has done that. In 34 years, they haven't come back to you and asked you for anything other than the 2 and 1/2% increase. That's incredible. So I would commend the town officials that have delivered that to you, but the time runs out. The expenses exceed the revenue. Proposition 2 and 1/2 left you with a provision to make a decision to fund your services. They gave you that mechanism. They knew it would be needed. 2 and 1/2% put a stopgap on funding, put a stopgap on expenses, but it gave your body, your citizens, the availability, the authority to give your officials more money where needed. I have a granddaughter in kindergarten this year. She had 24 kids in her class. She's six years old. She didn't have an aide. These cuts to the school have been deep. And I think it's time that you've hit the wall. It's time to vote for an override and let people deliver the services that you all need and you all depend on and rely on.
The override has already passed.
I know, but at the ballot. Please come vote for it at the ballot.
All right. Retrospectively, you're out of order. Town boards and committees, any endorsements or recommendations? Finance Committee recommends approval, but you couldn't hear it because the microphone was off.
Select Board recommends, endorses the approval.
Thank you. Any others?
School Committee supports.
Thank you. Any others? All right, so this is the Motion B budget on your sheet. So this is the backup plan. If for any reason the override fails at the ballot box, you'll still need a budget. This is that budget. All right? So, moderators, zero. Select Board, 8635. Town Administrator, 208,276. Finance Committee, 25,000. Town Accountant, 187,427. Town Audit, 45,000. Assessors, I'm sorry? You're out of order. You're not, you're not out of order. You're allowed to sneeze. I think I was at assessors. 108,300. Treasure Collector, 220,500. Town Council, 80,000. Data Processing, 159,723. Town Clerk, 108,593. Elections and Registrations, 24,950. Conservation, 1,800. Planning Board, 6240. ZBA, 3,000. Public Safety Headquarters, 33,358. Facilities Management, 179,652. Town Hall Building, 62,895. Print Town Report, 1,200. Print Town Report, twelve-hundred. WB Public Access, sixty-one-thousand-nine-fifty. Total General Government of all those things together. One-million-five-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-four-ninety-nine. We're going to go to Public Safety now. Police, one-million-nine-hundred-fifty-two-thousand-four-fifty-five. Fire. One-million-seven-hundred-three-thousand-four-twenty-three. Public Safety Communications, two-hundred-fifty-nine-thousand-nine-sixty-five. Building Inspector, one-hundred-forty-five-thousand-nine-fifty. Sealer of Waits, five-thousand-seven-forty-nine. Emergency Management, thirteen-thousand. Animal Control, twenty-seven-thousand-six-ninety-three. Total Public Safety. Education. Fourteen-million-three-ninety-six-nine-oh-three. Streets and Parks. One-million-one-hundred-twenty-six-thousand-sixty-seven. Snow Removal, two-hundred-forty-one-thousand. Street Lighting, thirty-seven-thousand-three-eight-eight. Trash Removal and Tipping, zero. Public Work, uh, Total Public Works, all those three categories, four categories, including the zero. One-million-four-hundred-four-thousand-four-fifty-five. Board of Health, still zero. Council on Aging, one-hundred-fifty-six-thousand-eight-eighteen. Veteran Services, sixty-eight-thousand-one-hundred. Total Human Services. Two-twenty-four-nine-eighteen. Library. Five-thirty-one-four-forty. Celebrations, zero. Total Culture and Recreation, five-hundred-thirty-one-thousand-four-forty. Debt Service, eight-hundred-ninety-thousand-eight-forty-eight. Intergovernmental, ninety-two-sixty-four. Employee Benefits Risk Management. Seven-million-three-fifty-four-thousand-three-fifty-seven. ESCO Lease Payment. Two-seventy-eight-nine-eighty-one. Total Other Categories, those three separate line items, I'm sorry, four separate line items. Eight-million-five-thirty-three-four-fifty for a grand total of thirty-million-seven-hundred-twenty-five-thousand-nine-hundred. So, those are the numbers behind Budget B. Questions or comments from the public?
Motion to close debate!
I'm sorry, you're out of order. He was at, he was coming to the microphone. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
That was pretty good, I'll give him that.
Go ahead.
I move to amend Article Nine B of the current warrant to say, see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the same amount as fiscal year 2025, plus the two and a half percent allowed by law, and the town will maintain trash service for his residences currently in place and cut its budgets in other places as necessary.
Is there a second? I'm sorry, is there a second? Okay. Thank you, hang on. Thank you for writing down the motion. Unfortunately, it's out of order. It, it requires, it infringes an executive function of the town, and so compelling the town to, by town meeting to do this is not an appropriate amendment. So, I'm ruling the amendment out of order because it can't be acted upon legally. Is there further discussion?
Motion to close debate!
I'm still here. The floor is still mine.
The floor is mine.
The floor is still his.
I try to be fair. There is a motion to close debate.
Second.
Somebody, clearly, Mr. O'Day has raised his hand. There is a discussion on whether to end debate. Should we end debate?
I don't think we should end debate. I think we should be able to talk about this.
And you are outnumbered.
Not yet. Anything further? All right, there's a motion to end debate. Get ready in the overflow room. I think we need two-thirds on this, by the way. We definitely have, but, just to clarify. All in favor of ending debate? Please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Okay. I think that's clear in this room. Motion carries, debate is ended. Our gentle motion maker, could, could you state your name and, and address so that we know who moved? We know Mr. O'Day seconded, thank you.
Joey Gibson, 23 Rivington Drive.
Thank you. Debate being ended, we will now vote on Motion Nine B, which is the alternative budget so that if the override fails at the ballot box, there's still a valid budget. Okay, so that's clear what we're voting on? All in favor of Nine B? Please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
No!
Sounds like the ayes, but let me check the other room. Motion carries, Nine B passes. Article One. Authorization to hear reports of the officers and committees of the town. If you're exiting, please exit quietly.
Christina Pedoni, Chair of the Select Board.
Okay, all right, not quietly, silently. Please.
I move the town vote to hear the reports of officers and standing committees of the town.
Is there a second?
Second, wait.
This article...
Don't we want to protect this like in nine A? Excuse me, don't we want to protect this like we did with nine A so someone doesn't open up nine B at the end of the thing? I don't know.
Need you to identify yourself.
Andy Cowan, 27 Rivington Drive.
Thank you. Ms. Pedoni, would you withdraw your motion in order to present at that?
I withdraw my motion.
Sorry.
I, I withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
Motion to reconsider.
There's a motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Pedoni has seconded. Any discussion of the motion to reconsider? I will note, I will note for everyone's clarity that this was the same kind of motion to reconsider, apparently, as was for nine A, which is so that it can't be reconsidered later in the meeting. So...
All right, since we ended debate and now we're starting debate again, or potentially, is this when that debate is?
This is to reconsider our passage of nine B.
All right, the only reason I would say to reconsider nine B is because it's not really a backup. If it happens, it's a, not a good thing for the town, in my opinion, as one of the select board members. So, I would say reopen it and vote it down, because I wanted to vote it down.
Okay, so that's an argument in favor of reconsideration. Any further question or comment from the public?
I'll have another comment.
Huh? Let's give someone else a chance if they want. All right, Mr. Frieden, if you have another comment, go ahead.
I'll restate my other comment, which is that we do reopen debate and revote the article because, as one member of the select board and probably not the favorite member of anybody up here, I don't think it's a backup plan. I think cutting trash makes it a bigger problem, and I think the other cuts in this budget had it, i- if the override does not pass and this budget kicks in, is not a good thing for the town. There's too many cuts, there's too many of everything. It, it only makes the problem next year even worse.
Ms. Pedoni.
I know a lot of people are leaving. You are leaving during a, a vote on B, so something could change right now on what you think you just voted on. For anyone in the hallway.
Thank you.
Unless you support the override, then go for it.
Here.
Neil Peterson, 67 Malden Street. I'm just curious to hear Mr. Frieden's thoughts on where additional cuts could be made or alternative cuts could be made for an alternative budget. Neil Peterson, 67 Malden Street. I was just going to follow up on Mr. Frieden's recommendation that we reconsider B and ask whether he has additional thoughts on how we could adjust an alternative budget that would better suit the town's needs.
I'm sorry, that's out of order. If, if we reconsider, you can bring it up, but right now, it's should we reconsider or not? So, you've given a clear map of what you think we might want to discuss if we reconsider, but what we're talking about right now is are we going to reconsider or not? Further discussion, something new? Hearing none. I'm going to ask you to vote on reconsideration. If we, if you say yes to reconsidering, you're saying, we're not so sure we like passage of nine B, we want to think about it some more. That's what a yes vote to reconsider will do. If you're happy with what happened with the vote on nine B and you want it to stay put, then you don't want to reconsider and you should vote no. Okay? Are we clear in the overflow room on that? Yes means reopen nine B. No means leave nine B alone and move on. All in favor of reconsidering our passage of nine B? Please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
No!
Thank you, just a second. The ayes have it. No reconsideration of nine B, and it cannot be reconsidered again later this meeting. If you're exiting, exit silently, please. No, we actually don't. We need to keep somebody type people between the two rooms. When I invite them in. I think I do. Hang on just a second, I'm going to see if we want to invite the overflow people in. Just a second. Please stand by, we're going to invite the people from the overflow room in. Yeah, we're going to need them. All right, if your neighbors flood the room, please make room for them. Article One, Authorization to Hear the Reports of Officers and Committees of the Town.
I move the town vote to hear the reports and officers of standing committees of the town.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Let's hear reports. Who's up first? Or, or was it just finance and we got theirs for Article Nine? Huh? And Swat did theirs, okay. Are there any other reports to hear? Hearing none. Article Two. Cooking with gas.
I move the town vote to approve Article Two as printed in the warrant, deleting the words, or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Frieden, thank you. Explanation or presentation?
Yes, this is a routine annual authorization allowing the town to borrow short-term funds with the vote of the Select Board to manage cash flow before revenues are received. It also allows the treasurer or tax collector to enter into banking agreements that could reduce fees. This article does not authorize any specific borrowing at this time, it simply ensures the town has the flexibility to act quickly if cash flow issues arise.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any recommendation or endorsement? Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Article Two passes. Article Three, Authorization to Expend Funds in Anticipation of Reimbursement of State Highway Assistance Aid. Is there a motion?
I move the town vote to approve Article Three as printed in the warrant, deleting the words, or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation or presentation?
This is a standard annual authorization allowing the town to accept and spend Chapter Ninety state highway funds for road repair and improvements. It also authorized borrowing in anticipation of reimbursement with Select Board approval, though borrowing is rarely needed due to timely reimbursement by staff. For fiscal year 2026, the town's Chapter Ninety allocation is four-hundred-thousand, four-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand-eighty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any recommendations or endorsements? Finance endorsements, thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public on this one? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article Three passes. Article Four, Authorization to Amend the Personnel Bylaw and to amend the Classification and Compensation Plan so as to provide employees a cost of living pay increase in fiscal year 2026, two percent. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. My name is Raj. I move the town vote to amend Section Five, Part AA, Classification and Compensation Plan of the Personal Bylaw by amand- amending the Compensation Plan Table to reflect a two percent cost of living adjustment for FY 26.
Is there a second? Thank you. Explanation or presentation?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. This article authorizes two percent cost of living adjustment to the wage rate to the town personal bylaw for the fiscal year 2026. It applies to non-union employees, and it is, and it is a part of annual process to keep the wages in line with the inflation as shown on the pink handout.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any comment, recommendation, endorsement? Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public?
Matthew Finn, 48 Yorktown Road. Well, I agree, everybody deserves a raise. Unfortunately, a lot of us here may have, may work for employers who have frozen wages due to uncertain economic conditions. You just asked all of us to pay more in taxes to fund that budget. Maybe it's time, in order to find some more money, we freeze town wages and don't allow this to go through. I understand it's, you just asked more of us, let's ask more of the town employees as well. Let's freeze town wages, let's save that money, and let's maybe help with that Band-Aid to fix our budget.
Thank you. Over here.
Kelsey Ho, 29 Scarlet Street. Mr. Moderator, I offer a counterpoint to say that, yes, you, we are asking our friends and neighbors to pay more in taxes. I was laid off at the end of March. I'm a disabled veteran. I have two young children. I have two young children. I wholeheartedly voted in favor of the override, knowing that our services are good. Think about our roads during the winter. Think about the fact that I think anybody in here is going to be hard-pressed to find longer than a two-hour power outage in recent memory. Look at the amazing programs that our library presents constantly for kids, for teens, for adults. We have been doing this as a town on a shoestring budget, and it is time for the citizens to show up and cut a check. Thank you.
Thank you.
While I do agree with what you said in terms of...
Through the moderator, if you'd be so kind.
Sorry, Mr. Moderator, I do agree with what the gentleman just said. But like I said, we're asking, you know, we, you're asking more of us. Let's ask the same of the town employees. The light department's not a fair, not a fair argument, because the light department is not funded via this budget. So a two-hour power outage is paid for by your electric bill, not by this budget. Those guys do a phenomenal job. The roadways, I had to go somewhere on a Saturday not too far, not too long ago, and there were three cars spun out on Maple Street because the roads weren't plowed. And that was at 7:30 in the morning on a Saturday morning. I understand storms happen. Yeah, we have great services, the roads are great and everything else. I'm not asking, I voted for the override. I'm all for paying a little bit more. I'm just asking that we find a little bit more to save and not push through a pay raise for town employees when we have a hard enough time finding the money to fund the government as it is now.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article 4 passes. Article 5, authorization to set the salary of elected officials. Is there a motion?
I move the town vote to approve Article 5 as written in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation or presentation on this?
This is the annual authorization to set the salary of elected officials.
Okay. Town boards and committees, any opinion you want to offer? Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article 5 is passed. Article 6.
Ms. Pedoni.
Authorization to transfer unexpendited funds from fiscal year 2025 appropriations. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Christina Pedoni, Chair of the Select Board. I move the town vote to transfer the unexpendaged balances of fiscal year 2025 appropriation and any other available funds to fiscal year 2025 appropriation accounts as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any presentation or explanation on this?
This is an annual article to authorize a transfer of unspent funds between fiscal year, to fiscal year 2025 accounts to allow the town to cover shortfalls in some accounts using available balances from others, as detailed on the orange handout. Questions, any questions you might have, we will direct towards the department heads.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions you want to offer? Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Questions or comments from the public?
Lisa Noack, Pine Garden Drive. I'm just wondering why there was so much extra money in the group health insurance premiums that you can reallocate that to something else at this point in time? And if the budget had overestimated what you were going to spend on group health insurance premiums, do we have that same kind of problem in this next budget that we just approved?
Does anyone know the answer to that from the town officer?
Hi, thank you for that question. So each year when we set our budget, we, as a management policy, set aside a certain contingency for employees that may have a change of life circumstance. They may get married, they may have a child.
What else can they do?
Retirements, positions that would, also new hires. If somebody steps down from a position or retires and we hire somebody new, and they come in at a different level of health insurance needs, so we do factor in a certain number of contingencies for that. You will notice that in your Budget B that we just passed, that there is a very large decrease to that line item. That is where we found about $100,000 worth of savings. We've reduced that contingency significantly in your Budget B. But again, it's a management practice, knowing that we are required to provide those benefits, and we try to budget accordingly to make sure that we're covered.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. I think a clarification may be in order here, because I'm advised that the table of where the money's coming from and where it's going to is actually not in the warrant, it's in your handout. And so I think an amendment to the motion might be in order to reference the handout rather than the warrant.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Sorry, I saw that in the explanation after.
So is somebody going to move, would someone move such an amendment? Someone moved and seconded?
Second.
And do you accept the amendment, Ms. Pedoni?
Yes.
Great. Then we don't need to vote on it, I don't think. Thanks. Any further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article 6 passes as amended. Article 7, authorization to pay bills from a previous fiscal year. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move the town vote to appropriate $4,574.87 from free cash and $71,404.09 from sewer retained earnings to pay bills from a previous fiscal year as printed in the warrant.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any explanation or presentation on this?
Yes, the article authorizes the payment of outstanding bills from a previous fiscal year using available funds, $4,574.87 from free cash and $71,404.09 from sewer retained earnings. These bills were not paid or encumbered before the fiscal year closed. Included in this article is a standard practice to ensure all prior year obligations are properly settled.
Thank you. I believe this has the same issue as the last motion, where we actually don't want to reference the warrant, but to reference the handout. Would someone consider amending the motion accordingly?
Did we actually have a second to that motion?
Yes.
Because, oh, okay.
Yes, the motion was seconded. Would someone be willing to amend, to make that correction?
So moved? Second.
Thank you. Mr. Morrissey, do you accept the amendment?
I absolutely accept that.
Great, then we don't need to vote it. Town boards and committees, any comments, recommendations? Thank you. Any others? Question or comment from the public?
Sandy Myers, 20 Maple Street. Could we get some explanation as to what the $71,000 from the sewer services is? It doesn't really say anything except consulting services.
So does anyone working for the town know the answer to that?
To the moderator, Tom Degg, DPW Director. On the sewer bills, they were misplaced in a prior administration's email address. So the administration at the time, my time, we didn't get it till later on, and we found it.
I think further, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, go ahead.
I think the question was, what are the bills for? So, you know, it's okay, because that's also true, also true. The invoices, the Weston-Samson monitors and maintains your sewer infrastructure. These are monthly bills that the town receives in return for those services.
Thank you. Further question or comment?
Hi, Peter Borg, 312 Prospect Street. You kind of sort of just answered my question about the sewer enterprise bill. My question is, Weston and Samson is an outside entity maintaining our sewerage infrastructure. Don't we have the in-house expertise to do this without getting billed by Weston and Samson? That's $71,000, that's almost a full-time equivalent employee. So I'm just questioning this contractual arrangement with Weston and Samson as opposed to doing it in-house with our own personnel.
If you know, go ahead.
Excellent question, but at this point in time, we don't, do not have the personnel to supplement the sewer side.
Okay. Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. We're going to put this to a vote, but I will note for your reference that paying a prior year's bills requires a four-fifths vote. So your moderator appreciates unanimity, doesn't mean you have to vote with everybody else. It just makes my job a little easier. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That sounded unanimous, thank you. Article 7 passes. Article 8, authorization to appropriate money to the sewer enterprise account for fiscal year 2026. Is there a motion?
I move the town vote to approve Article 8 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Explanation or presentation?
The article provides the annual funding for the sewer enterprise fund for fiscal year 2026. It appropriates a total of $2,261,474 to cover the administration, operation, maintenance, and debt service costs of the town sewer system. The sewer enterprise fund is separate from the town's general operating budget and must be self-sustaining. This means that the sewer-related expenses must be fully funded through user fees and other sewer-related revenues, not generated, not general tax dollars. The budget will be funded through a combination of user revenue, betterment reserves, and retained earnings.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions you want to offer? Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public?
Yeah, Mark Trudeau, 16 Linwood Lane, super quick. Just wondering if this is significantly different than earlier or more or less the same?
Anyone working for the town know the answer?
I'm going to go with not significantly different.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We've already done Article 9, A and B. We've already reconsidered or had motions for reconsider, to reconsider, and we're not reconsidering. Article 10, a vote to appropriate funds for capital improvement purchases. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer from available funds a sum of money to purchase or lease, purchase and equip capital items, including all costs incidental or related thereto, and as needed, to authorize the lease, purchase, lease or purchase agreement for the period up to or in excess of three years for such purposes, with each appropriation being treated as a separate items. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items are there. So with that, I would like to make the motion for the Project A. I move the town vote to purchase or enter into contract for a zero-turn mower for the public works and to appropriate for such a purpose, purposes $20,000 from the capital investment fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
I know for clarity that there are several parts, each part is going to be moved and voted separately. So this is Project A, Part A, the first one. We're just going to take them in order. So that's the one that's before us now. So is there any presentation or explanation on this?
I do, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
The explanation is going to be the same for all the projects.
Go ahead.
So the Capital Investment Board has reviewed all these proposed capital expenses and is considered, recommending for approval. This article addresses several important capital purchases across several departments like DPW, fire, school, to ensure that the department, that the town departments has the necessary equipment and infrastructure for continued operations and public safety. The Capital Investment Fund will be used to cover this cost.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any opinions, comments, recommendations you'd like to make? Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public?
Just curiosity, the...
Name and address, if you would, please.
Andy Cowan, 27 Remington Drive. Just curious, assuming this is like a super industrial strength zero-turn mower that costs $20,000.
Is there anyone with the town who can address this question slash concern?
To the moderator, Tom Degg, DPW Director. Uh, yes.
Further question or comment from the public on Project A?
David Ashwell, 139 Woodland. I believe at one point in time, part of this particular purchase was also going to possibly be a joint program between the light plant and the town. Is that still on the table, where the town and through this mower would assist the light plant in maintaining the vegetation when they need to? Or do we know if the light plant will still use a third party for that service?
Anyone with the town know the answer to that? Go ahead.
That was a different piece of equipment that we were considering sharing. This is an outright purchase strictly for public works, although I'm sure that if the light plant wanted to use it someday, we'd be okay with that. But the item you're referring to is a flail mower, and that you'll see in October.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify...
I'm sorry, name and address.
Oh, yes, it's Jessica, and I'm on Bonneview Drive. So I wanted to clarify...
Jessica, I'm sorry, we need your last name, too.
Olson.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt.
It's okay. I want to understand if this is for the purchasing of each of these line items, or if this is just like the appropriation of the funds that are coming from capital investment fund as opposed to somewhere else?
Anyone with the town know the answer to that?
Both of those statements are true. So we are, you are appropriating the purchase of these items. Some of them are outright purchases, and some of them are going to be matched by either a grant or another appropriation. But the, in the source of the funds for the purchase is the capital investment plan, or the capital investment fund, I apologize.
So a yes vote would be voting yes to those. What would a no vote do?
A no vote would mean that the town would not be able to make that purchase based upon your non-endorsement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. Each of these is going to require two-thirds, so that's that supermajority thing again. Not quite four-fifths, but still a supermajority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Project A is passed. Project B, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Project B, I move the town vote to purchase or enter into a contract for a defibrillator with monitors for the fire department and to appropriate for such purpose $42,500 from the capital investment fund and $97,500 being transferred from unexpendited funds that were previously appropriated in Article 10 of the May 15, 2023 annual town meeting from a free cast for Project C, Fire SBCBA Bottles.
Is there a second? Thank you. Explanation or presentation on this? Explanation or presentation on this? I know you gave one generally, is there anything special for this?
Mr. Moderator, the explanation is the same.
Okay.
As I gave earlier project.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, recommendations, comments?
Yeah, the both finance committee and capital investment board endorse this article, but just a note of commendation to the chief. The reason there are $97,000 of funding available from last year is the chief was able to obtain exterior funding for that.
Thank you. And thank you, chief. Question or comment from the public?
Ethan Carroll, Henry Street. I just want to know if the town has considered any privatization of the EMS system. I know that training, employment, paramedics are hard to find right now. A lot of this equipment is very expensive and needs to be replaced. If the town were to consider, and I don't know what it would cost to, to hire a private ambulance service, they would be responsible for ambulances, which the town currently replaces and pays for gas, fuel, whatever, training, employment of paramedics, equipment on the ambulance. I just don't know if that's been considered for privatization, which would eliminate the recurrent charges of having to replace equipment in such matters.
Okay, anyone with the town know an answer to that?
Mark Sadowski, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director for the town of West Boylston. Privatizing the ambulance would be an option in a larger community where there's enough call volume to generate enough revenue to offset the costs associated with operating an ambulance service. West Boylston is nowhere near the size of a community for that. The, probably the best examples of communities of that size are the city of Worcester, town of Shrewsbury is probably the smallest one, city of Marlborough, city of Framingham. Most of the other smaller communities are doing it with their fire department for the purpose of, it serves a dual role. All of our members of the fire department do both the fireside and the EMS side, so they're all firefighter and EMT or paramedic. And with that, the ambulance revenues that are generated through billing private insurance companies offsets approximately 50% of our budget. So we take in anywhere from about, currently it's about $740,000 to $800,000 a year that gets used, gets put into the, the town fund, but also helps offset the costs of the fire department, which our budget is, I think, $1.5 million this year in that ballpark. So it reduces the cost of the tax dollars to around $750,000, $800,000 a year for both fire and EMS service. You're not going to touch a private contracted ambulance for any of that. And most of the private service ambulances are in decline right now. You know, you probably remember years ago, city of Worcester had AMR, which was huge, Vital, which was huge. They're all closing shop, moving out, getting smaller and smaller, and so there's less of those resources available because it's not profitable.
Thank you. Further question or comment?
Kelsey Hoog, 29 Scarlet Street. Mr. Moderator, I have a comment and a question. First, the comment is that our town officials have put in hours and hours and hours of work in preparation for this meeting. They have likely thought of regionalization of our EMS services, of our schools, because I see our schools that we're going to be voting on next. We're not going to solve that tonight. This is the best option we have, let's vote for it. My question, Mr. Moderator, now is, can we move to vote on all projects on Article 10 simultaneously, and if so, I so move?
Let me think about that for a second. The motion was to treat them as separate items. I think the idea behind that is to give town meeting maximum transparency, visibility, and opportunity to object to any particular expense. I think I want to talk to council on can the, can it be consolidated somehow? Give me a second. Since part B is before us and there are two separate funding sources, it seems prudent to go ahead and vote B. And then if you guys really want to entertain C, D, E, F, and G together, imagine we can do that, but if, if it gets voted down, then, you know, because somebody doesn't like one of them, or enough people don't like one of them, that the, the whole set fails, it then creates complications that moving them separately and voting them separately avoids.
Understood, I'll withdraw that motion.
Thank you. Any further comment or question on project B? Hearing none, again, two-thirds, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Project B passes. Project C, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, project C. I move the town vote to purchase or enter into contract for a Ford 700 replacement for the fire department and to appropriate for such purpose $27,500 from capital investment fund with the remaining costs to be funded through grants.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Explanation or presentation on this separately, or are we just?
It's the same explanation.
Same explanation, okay. Town boards and committees?
Both the finance committee and capital investment board recommend approval, and for everyone's benefit, the total cost for this item is $550,000. Our fire chief was successful in getting grant funding for 95% of that purchase.
Again, thank you, chief. Other town boards or committees? Hearing none, question or comment from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's more than two-thirds. Project C is passed. Project D, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to purchase or enter into contract for Scott air pack bottoms for the fire department and to appropriate for such purpose $12,500 from CIB funds with remaining costs to be funded through grants.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. I have to ask each time, any further explanation? Is there going to be any explanation on any of these that you haven't already given?
It's the same explanation, the CIB has reviewed these proposals.
Okay.
And then they approved it or recommended.
Town boards and committees?
Finance committee and capital investment board endorse this article, and again, kudos to the chief. The total cost of these are $250,000, and he got another FEMA grant for 95% of that purchase.
Other boards or committees? Hearing none, any question or comment from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, project D, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Project D passes. Motion E, I mean, sorry, project E, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to purchase or enter into contract for auditorium ADA projects for the school department and to appropriate for such purpose $120,000 from CIB funds.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Town boards, I'm, town boards and committees, any recommendation or comment? Thank you, any others? Hearing none, question or comment from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Project E passes. Huh? Yeah. It doesn't have to be unanimous, but it was. Project F, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to purchase or enter into contract for a remote thermal unit replacement for the school department and to appropriate for such purposes $24,000 from CIB funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any recommendation or comment? Thank you, any others? Hearing none, question or comment from the public?
I'm just curious what this project entails. So Jessica from, Jessica Olson from Bonneview Drive.
Thank you.
But this is for the $120,000 for the auditorium, correct? I can't always hear you, Raj.
No.
No, it's on the air packs? Never mind then.
No, this is $24,000 for a remote thermal unit replacement.
Oh.
We're on F.
Oh, okay, all right, well, I'm late.
Okay.
Thanks.
Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimity, gotta love it. Project F is passed. Project G, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to purchase or enter into contract for a heating, heating system upgrade for the school department and to appropriate for such purposes $20,300 from capital investment funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Town boards and committees, questions, comments?
Finance committee and capital investment board.
Thank you, any others? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous again, thank you very much. Project G is passed. That concludes Article 10. Article 11, authorization to rescind the revolving accounts for the recreation and fields department and establish a new revolving fund, is there a motion?
Mr. Moderator, there is, before I make the potion, I just have a question about the motion. It looks like it's adding one row, but it doesn't say that it's merging these. This is to, just to clarify what I'm reading here, it's to get rid of the multiple and bring it into one and add a row. So it says by deleting in said table one, the row four? Okay. I just wanted to make sure so I didn't have to rescind the motion and then start over. You didn't give me a chance, all right.
Go ahead.
I move the town to vote pursuant to provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to amend Article 40 of General Bylaws Revolving Fund by adding a new row in table one, authorizing revolving funds to establish Parks and Recreation, Parks Commission Revolving Fund as printed in the warrant, and by deleting, sorry, and by deleting in said table one, the rows for recreational program and the parks and playground and field revolving funds, and further to authorize the town accountant to transfer the remaining balance as of June 30, 2025, in the recreation program and the parks and playground and field revolving funds to the new Parks and Recreation slash Parks Commission Revolving Fund authorized hereunder.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any explanation or presentation on this?
This article is necessary, because, I did a terrible job on reading that, I'm sorry. This article is necessary because the town no longer has a functioning recreational program. To make more efficient use of the funds, the article proposes combining the existing revolving funds into a single Parks and Recreation slash Parks Commission Fund that will manage finances for both recreation programs, programs and park operations. This consolidation will streamline the process and help fund and maintain and improve, improvement of the town parks, fields, playgrounds, and recreational services.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, comments, recommendations?
Finance committee.
Thank you, any others? Hearing none, question or comment from the public?
Yeah, Mark Trudeau, 16 Linwood Lane. I was just, am I right in understanding that these funds, they don't really hold any balance, they're just a revolving fund to make spending a little less cumbersome? Is that correct?
Is anyone from the town?
Like, they held maybe a year's worth in them or less?
So the revolving fund balances, I just happen to have.
Yeah, I'm curious, especially the recreation fund, what's its balance and what do we typically spend a year, what's the history been?
$13,308 is in the rec budget, or the rec revolving fund, and $718.23 would be in the fields revolving fund for a total of new, if, if passed, and we combine these two, the new balance would be $14,026 with 27 cents.
And what's been our spending history roughly of the recreation fund?
From my understanding, it is pretty sporadic as to when you have a recreation program that can expend those funds. I think that there's been some, clearly the reason that we're working towards making this change is to be able to bolster those programs and bring some conformity to that. We could probably work to have a better, more substantial answer for that at your next town meeting, once these funds become available.
My concern for the room is that, and for the moderator, is that we might not have a recreation program right now, but I would hate for the intent of the recreation program, for those funds to be raided and spent on, you know,
Yeah.
On things that, that serve a smaller group of people and don't serve the kids. And that's my concern and question about this, this change. I get how you, oh, well, we don't have a program, we might as well just move the money somewhere else, but.
There is, there is no expenditure with this particular article.
I know.
Okay, just clarifying.
But it, it puts money in the hands of the, the people who upgrade fields and stuff, and they might not use it for kids' recreation programs. That's my concern.
I believe that with the wording of this article, they would have to.
Thank you, that helps.
Go ahead.
Erin McKenzie, 15 Townsend Drive. Can there be a little bit more guidance on what the recreation funds actually encompass right now in town?
Anyone from the town have an answer for that?
Unfortunately, I've not had an opportunity. I'm sorry to not have an answer for that question, my first one tonight. Maybe somebody from the select board might be able to provide a little bit more information, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm going to get Christina Foni through the.
You're good.
I'm going to give you a, a little bit of what I know. We used to have a rec director, and they used to have different type of recreational events for a period of time. Now we haven't had a rec director, so they're not putting on events. My understanding, and I should have went and looked for the article at the meeting, one of our town meetings, we appropriated money to go into that fund for a rec director to run programs, almost at like a stipend position. I'm waiting for Lesby to say, no, I'm wrong, but, and I just don't think we've had anyone in that role for some time. Waiting for Lesby to say, no, I'm wrong, but, and I just don't think we've had anyone in that role for some time. Can I do another one? This is just a comment, and I do remember the rec director, and she did throw on some things. It would be, I think, beneficial if the town would be able to organize our actual rec activities, whether it be baseball, softball, soccer, all through the town, instead of depending solely on individuals to organize, run, fund, and do all of that, all on the individual's town. That's just my two cents to throw out there.
Thank you.
I don't disagree.
Neil Peterson, 67 Malden Street. I'll echo those sentiments, and then through you, Mr. Moderator, to the town administrator, to the extent she's able to answer, I have two questions. First is, just as a point of clarification, my understanding is that the recreational program funds derive solely from revenue coming from recreational program signups historically. Recognizing that there haven't been any lately, but that that's where the money that's currently in that fund came from. So that it's, we only fund that account with revenue from recreational programs we're running, and that that's separate and distinct from the revenue streams that feed into park maintenance, operations, et cetera, which is the second account. My second question, apologies, it's a compound. My understanding, based on this language, is that we are then pooling all of that money into one account that can draw at the parks' discretion for any of those purposes, not allocated to the purposes from which they were funded.
That is correct.
Then a comment, if I may.
Go ahead.
I, I do think, to the point made earlier, it's important that we keep recreation programs and systematic maintenance, operations, et cetera segregated, because I do think that they address two key distinct needs in the town. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
I do believe we have one Parks Commissioner in the audience. I know. I have two. Oh, we have two. I have two of them, one in back, so I, I don't wanna speak for you folks, but maybe you could offer some educational information to us. Sorry. I can see now because I haven't shined the light directly in my eyes.
Paul Scally, Shrine Ave. I've been on the Parks Commission since 2020. The money that we're getting was, was not just, or the money that we're trying to combine was not just made by the director. It was money that had been allocated from another fund to begin with, from what we used. And she had some of it from when she did the Fall Fest and stuff like that, and then there was a whole bunch used to fund other programs. But what we're trying to use it for now would be to do programs and also put it to use for, you know, our fields and stuff like that that are needing money.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Jennifer Breen, 118 Malden Street. I wanted to just provide some background information. I was the rec director for three years as a volunteer. I had small children at the time and knew that this town was lacking a rec department, so I stepped up and did it for three years without pay. And then the Parks Commission said, you have to take something. And they gave me $300 a month, because that's what I agreed to. I took children to watch Usit Mountain. I ran Easter egg hunts. I ran gingerbread housemaking. I ran all kinds of things. The problem is, is that the town is just not big enough to support a rec department. People showed up for certain things, but when you would try to run other programs, families are scheduled to do all kinds of events, all kinds of activities in other places. And I was begging people to sign up for programs. And I was not drawing money away from that. I was making money for the town to be able to run more programs. I would have half-day programs at the elementary school and have 50 or 60 kids show up, and I would pay high school kids to run them. So after I quit, after doing it for five years, it went undone for a couple of years, and then they did fund the position, and that person took over and tried for about a year to do it. And it just was not successful. And I appreciate that people say, it can be done, it should be done. We've tried to do it, and it just doesn't work. We're too small. There have been some great opportunities to do things in town, but unfortunately, I just don't think we can support it. And I think combining these and trusting the Parks Commission to spend this money appropriately is the right thing to do.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Article 12.
I move the town vote to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Thank you. Presentation or explanation?
Sure. This article sets the fiscal year 2026 spending limits for, for each town. Each of the town's revolving funds is authorized under the Mass General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, and Article 40 of the General Bylaws. Sorry, I don't naturally interpret Roman numerals. Revolving funds allow certain town departments or boards to retain revenues from program fees, charges, or other receipts, and use them directly to support those specific services without needing a separate appropriation from the general fund. These funds help departments operate efficiently and maintain continuity in their services. Town meeting must vote each year to set or reaffirm the maximum amount that can be spent from each fund during the fiscal year. These limits can be changed by a future town meeting vote if needed. The proposed fiscal year 26 limits ensure that departments such as the Council of Aging, Health Department, Library, and others have access to the revenue they generate to cover related expenses such as supplies, program costs, or contract services within the approved caps. This article is a routine annual financial action to maintain fiscal control and transparency.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, opinions? Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The ayes have it. Article 12 passes. 13. Authorization to appropriate funds from Community Preservation Fund revenues. Is there a motion?
This is CPC that's moving this article?
Is there someone to move?
Yep.
It's okay.
Neil Peterson, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I move the town vote to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant, except for replacing fiscal year 2025 budgeted reserve with fiscal year 2026 budgeted reserve, and deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any explanation or presentation on this?
This article fulfills the annual requirement to allocate estimated Community Preservation Act revenues into specific categories: historic resources, community housing, open space, and a general budget reserve. It also covers administrative costs for the Community Preservation Committee. These allocations keep the town in compliance with CPA guidelines and allow for funding for future eligible projects.
Thank you. Town boards and committees, any comment, opinion? Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Article 13 passes. Article 14. The vote to appropriate funds for Community Preservation Fund projects is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Is there a motion?
Neil Peterson, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, once again. Mr. Moderator, a question for you. I have the motion as written, as previously discussed with the town administrator. There is an amendment to be considered. Would you like me to read the article as written or with the proposed amendment?
How involved is the amendment?
Well, I actually have two, so I can--
Then move it and then amend it.
Very well. All right, so as written, I move the town vote to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
Second.
Hang on. Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded. Some explanation or presentation?
These appropriations to fund two proposed projects, both proposed by the Parks Commission.
Okay. Town boards and committees?
Good evening. Jim O'Day, 41 Winthrop Street, a member of the Parks Commission. And we certainly support both of these, both of these matters. The $25,000 to purchase a scoreboard is obviously for not Mr. Field, but it's Mixer Field. And in order to continue to play games at our newly renovated beautiful field down there, and in order to have Massachusetts Athletic Association to stand behind those games, it's necessary to have a scoreboard. We've had some good fortune in that piece of this, and that, a, the Clinton Bank has donated, I believe it's $4,000 or $5,000, so the $25,000 may very well end up being 20, and the five wouldn't have to come here. We would, you know, it would stay with the bank, obviously. So I think there's also a need for a shed at the Mixer Field. You know, since renovating the field, the field looks tremendous. But we need to have a location, a site, so that we can put our lime and our stone and rakes and so on and so forth. So we certainly support the $25,000 for, for the Mixer Field project.
Thank you. Other boards or committees? Hearing none. Any question or comment from the public? And maybe this might be a good time to find out what you want to amend.
Neil Peterson, 67 Malden Street. The first amendment would be to change the designated purpose. So for those unaware, there are four broad categories that the Community Preservation Committee's funds are recommended for use. The, the applications for these two projects were both proposed under recreation purposes. It's listed in the warrant article as open space. It's a technical clarification. The second amendment relates to the Project B as listed in the warrant article. The application for Project B proposed a two-phase project. Phase one was for $25,000 to fund a feasibility study for woodland. For those unfamiliar with woodland, the field currently has inadequate drainage. And then I'm sure several of you are aware with the fact that the tennis courts are in a state of pretty awful disrepair. So the feasibility study would be conducted to propose three options for renovating the entire field space, including looking at field uses, surface uses for what were previously the tennis courts, traffic and parking. And then when the three options are proposed, the phase two component of the project would be an additional $125,000 to perform initial project work. That $125,000 would be spent on a project that would not be presented to the town. And so I, as I mentioned, I'm the Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. I voted against approving the project as constituted. I recommended that the project be separated into the two phases, and that only phase one be presented to the town today. I want to be clear that myself and certain other members of the committee who feel like-minded are very much in favor of using CPC funds to renovate woodland. My position is that the town should have a say in what those funds pay for. And as is currently constituted, that $125,000 can be spent on one of the options without the town being presented the options, being invited to provide input on whether those options adequately address the town's recreational needs, and to determine whether we think that the project will ultimately be funded, because $125,000 is unlikely to cover the entire balance of whatever project is chosen.
Thank you. Have you written up these amendments on an amendment form?
Yes.
Great. Is there a way that you can move the amendment?
Certainly. So I move to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund revenues and/or from prior year reserves the following amounts--
Let me stop you.
Yeah.
The amendment should say what it says now and what it should say instead, so striking this or replacing that.
Okay, I can do that. So I move to amend Article 14 as written to strike the words recreation where appearing in Project A and Project B, to strike the dollar amount $150,000 from Project B, both in the total appropriation column and in the source of appropriation column, to strike the words open space in Row B under source of appropriation, and replace them with the word recreation, and to strike the words woodland park design under the project description for Project B, and replace them with funding the cost of a feasibility study with respect to potential woodland park renovations.
So does $150,000 get replaced with anything?
$25,000. Thank you.
Did you say that? Did I miss it?
I thought I had, but I might have missed it. So again, let me repeat. Instead of $125,000 for the total appropriation for Project B, we would be approving, under the amendment, $25,000, which again, for the project purpose, would be funding the cost of a feasibility study with respect to the potential woodland park renovations.
Okay, so to clarify, you would like to amend your motion, Leslie?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. Is there a se--
Mr. Moderator? Is there a possibility, an option for a question of the gentleman relative to that amendment?
There is. I would like to get a second on the amendment before we try to discuss it. Thank you, Ms. Olson. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Let's discuss, Mr. O'Day.
So I think one of the concerns of the Parks Department, or Parks Commission, I should say, is around timing a little bit. So part of what we were hoping to accomplish in, in the original language was that certainly the feasibility study is obviously needed. But as each day goes by, as you're aware, we, we wouldn't necessarily be able to really begin working on this project probably until another year from now, if we're looking at considering the amendment. I think the town has a need to, to really address the fields over there in a way so that they can be utilized, not three years from now, but more currently. I know there's been some concerns around where are those who are gambling involved with, with soccer? Where are they gonna go? Up until the time of construction, it's our consideration, and I hope that we would be able to continue to allow usage of the field. But the longer we, we delay this process, the concern of the Parks, Parks Commission is that we're gonna just continue to be very limited until we're able to complete this process. So right now, we're limited. As you will probably see, the fields are in difficult shape, particularly with water and drainage and so on. So that just gets prolonged, is my concern, sir, right? So I would be against that amendment.
Thank you.
May I respond?
You may, through, through the moderator.
And through the moderator to Representative O'Day, I first want to thank his efforts to secure funding from the state for other parks projects. Mixer Field came out beautifully. I, I will respond two ways. First, as to scheduling, my understanding is that none of the local youth sports boards, soccer, lacrosse, baseball, et cetera, were consulted-- were consulted about the proposed feasibility study or any project that would result from that. And they weren't consulted in terms of how the impact on any renovations during an existing sports schedule would affect their ability to use woodland, which right now primarily serves soccer needs. Secondly, my understanding is that the only concern about timing that was raised as part of the application process was a concern about the ultimate cost of goods and services, materials, that would be needed to perform the projects. That's true. I'm not going to dispute that point. I think as time increases, expenses increase. You only need to have attended this meeting about an hour and a half ago to have that reality smack you in the face. But I also noticed about an hour and a half ago, there was vehement opposition to the idea of raising taxes by a few hundred bucks annually to pay for continuing our trash service. I'm skeptical that without town buy-in on the proposed project, you will have a difficult time getting the town to approve the necessary funds that it will take to bring this project to completion. So we could see ourselves in a position of having spent $125,000 on a bridge to nowhere. And so I think before we spend that money, the town should be presented the preferred option by the Parks Commission, allowed opportunity to provide their own input on it, and second that decision so that the Parks Commission has confidence that when they bring it to the town, looking for additional funds to complete the project, they're going to have the backing of the town electorate.
So in conversations that I've had with the chairman relative to conversations that he has had with users, I think he was pretty clear in his conversation with me that he did have- and there were concerns raised, but he did have conversations with those that utilize the fields. And he assured them that there would not be an issue of not having availability for their activities to continue and to take place during this entire process. And yes, we did hear about funding earlier this evening, no question about it. But I think, you know, not unlike schools, we have to be able to have beautiful, maintained parks so that we have opportunity for recreation, for organized teams to have a place here in town to go to. So again, I would disagree with the amendment, and I ask that to be defeated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Moderator.
Hang on. Can you show the amendment to the town clerk, please? Thank you. One more comment, then there are other people waiting.
A point of clarification to Representative O'Day, through you.
Go ahead.
And to the rest of the room here. I 100% support using CPC funds to fund renovation of woodland park. I just want to see it done correctly, and I want to see it done with community input. If we have that, you will see me being the first in line here at the next town meeting, recommending the use of CPC funds. You will see me banging my hand on the table at every committee meeting, recommending that we move forward with the project. But that's until we have transparency and involvement by the electorate. Thank you.
I would second- sorry, David Ashwell, 139 Willlin. I agree with the prior gentleman's statement that I feel that the community at large should have a say in the plans. If they care, they can show up to these public meetings. They can review the different options that were presented by qualified contractors to the state. And then, we as a community can make that vision happen together. And I feel like that's a better path forward. Yes, we will have naysayers that will show up and will decry spending a penny more than what has happened today. But I feel that if this town has proven tonight that when there's something in the best interest of the town, they will vote in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Being on the Parks Commission, we have discussed in the past, when a field goes down, that we have to move to other fields. And we had to already explain to soccer that if woodland is not usable when it goes into, you know, it hopefully goes into being renovated, that the football field would be available, and that's where soccer would have to move to and play. And we would make it work with all the other sports. And as of right now, youth baseball, soccer, and lacrosse are doing a great job of- and, yeah, are doing a great job of scheduling with each other field times and practices. And we've kind of overseen it, but they've done a fantastic job of working with each other in order to make sure every kid has the same playing time for the same, you know, their sport on different fields. So there would definitely be plenty of places for the kids to play when woodland field went into renovation.
Thank you.
Hi, Christina Pedoni, 1 Pheasant Hill Run. Just a clarifying question. So I was actually at that other meeting, and the CPC voted to approve both of these. There was two people, Neil and another member, Tim Whitaker, who voted not to approve this. I am questioning the motion on the floor to amend. He represented himself, I'm not a lawyer. He represented himself as chair of the CPC and made that amended amendment. I would like to see the vote from CPC that authorized him to amend a vote that they made publicly. And if not, I would ask for that not to be considered because it's a misrepresentation.
Thanks, hang on.
If I may offer a point of clarification through you, Mr. Moderator, to town councils-
You may.
This is town council's recommendation. When I got up to speak about the amendment, I offered that I was offering the amendment in my capacity as Neil Peterson of 67 Malden Street, not Neil Peterson, Chair of the CPC. I read the amendment, or excuse me, the article as currently written in the warrant in my capacity as Chair of the CPC. So the amendment was proposed by me as a private citizen and resident. That's how I proposed the amendment. Neil Peterson, 67 Malden Street. Now, I did mention that I sit on the committee. I thought that brought some relevant facts to the issue on the floor. So I did mention I'm on the committee. I did mention I chair the committee. I did not mention that I'm offering the amendment in my capacity as Chair of the CPC.
So is it your representation to this body that the CPC has not endorsed this amendment itself? This is your proposed amendment, not anything the CPC has voted on or approved or endorsed?
That's correct. This is my proposed amendment in my capacity as a private resident.
Okay, thank you. Something else, Mr. O'Day? Or are you just standing ready?
So the clarifying comment, I think, was that there was a previous vote of the committee, right, and to my knowledge, coming here this evening, and I have no problem with the individual making an amendment, obviously, but that the body itself had made a comment and a commitment to be supportive of the warrant as written. So I am a little- I appreciate him recognizing himself as himself. But not being able to speak on behalf of the committee, I think that just takes a little bit away of the power of what he's attempting to do.
Thank you.
Point of- I have to clarify, it's a misstatement. So if I may, through you, Mr. Moderator.
It sounded like he said the same thing you said.
No, there's a key point of distinction.
Go ahead.
What the CPC voted on was to recommend to present the warrant article to the town. The CPC doesn't recommend the use of funds. It only presents it to the town to determine whether to vote on it. So I just want to clarify that point. Thank you.
Okay.
My error. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Erin McKenzie, 15 Townsend Drive. I'm thoroughly confused now. Primarily because I was also at that meeting. I understand that everybody here is wholeheartedly in agreement that we want the best for our children and that woodland needs to be replaced, fixed, whatever. I'm not sure, like, where the amendment is coming in because I agreed- My understanding of it when we were at that meeting is that the money was going to go to fund the research to make sure that we didn't have a disaster like we did when we replaced- not Gudell, Pride Park, the playground. So someone needs to clarify it for me so I can understand where this money is coming from. My understanding was that the money was designated to do the- the research, I guess. Is that the correct word?
Architectural proposal.
The architectural proposal. And then, if you wanted your say as a representative of any kind of sports like soccer or lacrosse that are being played at that field, then you can go to the meetings where it was going to be presented just like, you know, the playground was presented. So why are we amending it? Is that not what we did?
Is there something new?
Mr. Moderator, I think that you should allow Neil to combat what was in the article because he's saying that that wasn't actually the case, nor was it in the application that was sent out to that board. So just making sure, is that, you're saying it from the audience, the material you received, what you're saying is not true what Erin is saying happened in that meeting? I just, I mean, I think you should clarify that because I'm concerned that you have all of us sitting here, and it very much seems that two people voted it down, and now you're sitting here because the vote didn't go your way.
Hi, my name is Patricia Halpin. 32 Applewood Road, resident for 50 years. I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee. And what Neil said is right. We voted to bring it to you, to give it your consideration. Some of us didn't have the courage to vote in the appropriate way. The two people, I would redo my vote in a heartbeat. I did not, I voted not to approve it because, but because it's a worthy project. Neil has given us great leadership, and I find this very offensive meeting.
I agree. I agree. I'm pretty offended by it too, Pat, as a 20-year volunteer.
Ms. Pedoni.
Very offended.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah?
I have a very simple question. My name is Selectman Raj, 305 Gudell Street. So CPC requires an application to be considered by the board. My question is, what was the motion on the CPC? Is the motion is for $25,000 or $150,000? Is there a mo- that, how was it worded? That's all, one simple question I'd clarify.
The article was moved as written at 25 and 150. That's how it was-
No, it's moved as $150,000. It's not $25,000.
There are, there's A and there's B. If you look, if you- It was moved as A and B, 50 and 150, I mean, 25 and 150, and then amended. Or a proposed amendment, which is what we are continuing to discuss. I really don't think that we need to rehash everything that happened at the CPC meeting on this date or that date or the other date. So I'm looking for something that's going to inform the people, should we accept the amendment or not? That's what we're talking about. And the history of how the amendment was made, I think, has been discussed enough, so.
I have new stuff. I have something about the amendment. Hold, I just have to get my paper. So I'd like to ask a question about why we're changing the wording that says to fund open space purposes to recreation when in the previous article, there are only three categories that it can come out of: historic resources reserve, community housing reserve, and open space reserve. And there is no recreation department or for it to come out of. I think we should leave those as open space purpose because I think that's the only appropriate place where it can come from, from the three funds. Unless it's something I don't understand. And then a second comment is, in my brief time on the Parks Facilities Committee, there is a difficulty that the Parks Commission puts up with, and it's frustrating. And I think O'Day was hitting on this, and it's a timing issue for these projects when you got, if you get a small amount to do a study, and then you have to keep coming back to town meeting or wherever you go to get your funding. That feasibility study is a waste of time if it's just a feasibility study or a small study. You really should give the Parks Commission enough money to get all the way through to the project. Otherwise, it doesn't do you any good because I believe people are saying that if you take like two years to get from design to feasibility to something to something to get to when you're going to start the project, none of the cost information is valid anymore. And it's in, when I was on facilities, I was coming to the end of a project, and it wasn't my frustration, but it was an obvious frustration of the Parks Committee and Parks Facilities Committee, that it's very difficult to run, whatever, these park improvement projects when you string out the funding, and they can't, they can't work in a sort of an urgent or timely manner, and all the bids go out the window, and it ends up costing more, and then they have to come back and say, "Look, we're over budget." Kind of not their fault. It's just that like three years later, a bud, a proposal isn't valid. So I think we should take a little sympathy. I appreciate the concern about transparency. I think they did a nice job when it was sort of the town administrator was sort of taking the lead on the Pride Park project, and she had a meeting that put out the, I think that there was, I forget what the percentages were. There was like an initial couple of proposals that came forward, and then there was a public meeting or hearing to talk about them, and then they went forward from there. But it was a phased approach that let the public contribute, but it wasn't here. It was at meetings that the Park Commission held. I think we should give them what the $150,000 that they think they need to get to that point. And I think that we should give the Parks Commission, I mean, I'm not a, I'm just a volunteer in town, just trying to get things done. We should give the Parks Commission the ability to learn or learn from what's going on and be able to trust them a little bit that they'll bring it out and have hearings or something like that, but give them the money so that they can at least get to some point in the project and make some good, instead of coming back to us and having to say, "I don't know what happened. We need another whatever, $100,000, $300,000, $1 million, whatever for the project because we ran out of money, because it took too long." So I would, that's a vote against the amendment and to go forward with the regular.
Right. I'm now seeing the amendment for the first time.
Oh, yeah. The questions about recreation words and open space words. Oh, sorry.
I'm seeing the amendment, and I'm ruling it out of order because it is effectively blacklined, so you can figure it out, but it's not stated in a way that this body can act on it. And so I don't think it's properly before us.
Can I keep evangelizing?
No. So I'm ruling, I'm ruling the moved amendment as out of order because it is not something, it is not written in a way that this body can act on it. If you would like to rewrite it, we could table this and come back to it. There's been enough discussion, but I'm not going to, I'm not going to consider it because it is not in a form that lets town meeting act on it. The amendment having been ruled out of order, the motion to pass Article 14 is still pending. Is there any further discussion on passing Article 14 as written?
Hi, my name's Christine Biscotti from 180 Ave. I am concerned about this number for Line B, especially when they're saying that it's only going to be $25,000 for the feasibility study- only going to be $25,000 for the feasibility study and $125,000 for an option that we haven't yet defined. So if it's not covered and you don't know how much that option is really going to cost, are we going to be put in another situation where you start some work and then you don't have enough to finish it? So then what happens to the field in the meantime and then you're still going to have to come back and get more money approved from the town? I'd rather see it done correctly, where you do a feasibility study, you figure out what your options are, how much they're going to cost, and then you present it to the town for the full cost of what that option, the options are, so that we can do an accurate vote on true information rather than just a guess on what you think that those options are going to cost. And I'm speaking as somebody who is a parent of a soccer player. I'm concerned because I hear the Parks Department saying that they have their town's children's interests in mind, but what happened with mixture field is that it could have been made into a dual option field, but for some reason, they decided to make it only for softball or baseball and soccer was left out. So why would we waste money again if you're not going to be making choices that are all-inclusive of all sports and we know the actual real cost of the proposal? So I suggest that we say no to line B and we get a study done and then we can have more conversation about what the real cost is so that we can actually cover all of the sports that the town needs, not just the baseball, softball diamond, and we can have an option for soccer and lacrosse as well, so we can get the most for our money and the most out of our limited space that we have.
Thank you.
Lena Archimbo, 330 Goodell Street. I just feel like we're a little bit swirling in amendments and procedural and maybe missing the basics. So, Mr. Moderator, if you would, I'd like to ask the Parks Commission to answer a couple of questions. The first, what is the $150,000 for? Is it feasibility or will it put shovels in the dirt? And secondly, what are you asking the people doing the feasibility study to provide you in terms of options? For example, is it only about tennis and soccer or are there other things on the table that you expect to hear back from and consider?
Mr. O'Day.
Yeah, no, it's for a number of different options. I think there'll be three or four different options. We don't necessarily know precisely, but it's most definitely tennis, soccer, lacrosse and what? Oh, right.
Pickleball.
But anyway, so there will be a number of, we believe, through the feasibilities for the 25 and the architect, to really kind of just get started on the process. The one, the remaining 125 would be testing the ground to see what kind of work needs to be done there to improve on. The drainage right now is pathetic, so that we need to find out what we need to do there and also to make sure that the actual ground underneath is going to, you know, withstand a lot more use than what it's had over the last several years and so on and so forth. So, you know, could that number go up? I think there's a possibility that that's, that's possible, particularly the longer we wait. And that's one of the concerns that the, that the Commission has been wrestling with. It's like, as Mark mentioned, I too was on the Parks Facilities Commission Committee and, you know, you get involved, you start looking at things, hearing things, learning new things, and all of those things generally wind up costing a little more money than what the original plan was given to us. So that really kind of goes back to, to mixture. We didn't have enough money at the moment to do, to do the shed because we used it all in the entirety of the field. So I hope I answered that question for you.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator. I did state that my question very clearly. I am concerned with the, or the B. A is for mixture field. I don't, I'm okay with that. $25,000 approved by the CPC for mixture field for a shed. Based on the amendment or based on the explanation by Neil Peterson, $150,000 was approved by the CPC. CPC normally receives an application. The application states how much money they need for this, how much money they need for that, and then the CPC, as a committee, they approve. Did the committee approve on the phase one as a study $25,000 or did they approve $150K by the CPC for this B? That's all my question, you know? So my question was very clear. If, is they, did they approve $25,000 for the woodland parks or did they approve $150,000? What the committee approved? What was the committee's approved, approved amount?
Does anyone know the answer? Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, to Raj, to clarify, the committee doesn't approve the use of funds for anything. What the committee recommends is that the town consider the proposed project, or we recommend that the proposed project is not in a, in a form ready to be sent to the town. So what the committee approved was that the proposed project of $150,000 consisting of two phases. Phase one, $25,000 for a feasibility study. Phase two, $125,000 for initial project work after the Parks Commission selected one of the options from the feasibility study. They recommended that the full $150,000 project proposal be sent to this town for consideration and whether the town wants to move forward with it. That's what was recommended, not that the project was recommended, that the vote on the project be presented to the town. I offered an amendment as an alternative for the town to consider that would only authorize, have the town authorize, $25,000 for the feasibility study and waiting on the $125,000 until the feasibility study results were presented to the town. That's what I proposed.
I think I'm going to pass.
Okay. Over here.
Chris Burglum, 3 Goodell Street. So my only question is, the $150,000, that's just design and testing that we don't even know what it's, what's going to happen to that park as far as whether it's going to be a lacrosse field, a soccer field, a football field, and it doesn't even touch the tennis courts or the parking lot because we know last year we spent close to, I think it was $85,000 to resurface the tennis courts over at Goodell Park alone. And those are in good, those were in good shape. That was just a follow-up. Am I correct on that? That this is just a kind of putting our toe in the water, dipping our toe in the water because there's probably going to be much more to come, correct?
That was also my understanding to the point where we weren't going to have a final number until we could get these initial testings done and then present the town as a whole with, this is what it's going to finally cost.
So I'm, Mr. Moderator, Neil Peterson, 67 Malden Street, through you to the people in the audience here. I'm reading directly from the application that was submitted to the CPC, okay? Phase one, pre-funding $25,000. Preliminary design based on record drawings. Site visit, develop two to three configurations. Order of magnitude budget comparison. Meeting, refine preferred option. Review comments, scope with civil and electrical. Perform independent cost estimate. Color graphics for funding support. Phase two, after funding, $100 to $125,000 TBD, there's no cost allocations to any of these line items, FYI. Existing conditions, prefer, perform topo utility survey with property boundaries. Perform test pits. Design development, material options and features for approval. Bid alternate prioritization. Construction documents, drawings and specifications at 60%, 90%, and 100%. Coordinate front-end contract with town procurement. Bidding assistance. Assume bid docs online. Pre-bid, review bids and recommend. Construction administration. Review submittals, RFIs, PCOs, pay requests. Site visits to review work. Punch list. Close out.
This is a whole lot of detail and if you find it confusing, you can move to table this. If you, if you feel like you have enough information and you want to vote it, move the question. The way they were moved, they have to vote on them together.
Mr. Moderator, I have a question on that front.
Would you like me to split the question, to divide the question?
Well, I was, I was informed that as written, the warrant article permits, because I believe the language says to be voted on as separate items.
You are correct. I'm in error.
Thank you.
It says each appropriation being treated as a separate item.
It's treated as a separate variation, but it doesn't require to be voted on separately. But I can't, I'm going to.
I stand corrected. They can be voted separately. They don't have to be voted separately, but they can be. And so I will, I don't know, should, do I need a motion or can I just decide to divide the question?
Can I ask a clarifying question, please?
Not yet.
Since you're making the decision to divide it, you can just be, from the motion warrant, just put Project A and Project B. Same way I've been approved, Project A of Article 14.
But I don't think, if I can, if I can divide the question.
I'm going to throw in the full, their base value.
If they want to. It is within the moderator's discretion to divide the question, particularly where the warrant article, it says that they are being treated as separate items. And so you should understand the motion then as to approve Project A in Article 14 as printed in the warrant. And then we will do Project B. So I'm dividing the question into A and B. That's the moderator's discretion and it sounds like it's going to be helpful in narrowing our discussion. So we'll do A first. Anything else to say about A?
Do you want to add, can the article or the corrected change out the open space?
There is no correction. The amendment was ruled out of order. There was a subsequent piece of paper that is not an amendment. You need to use an amendment form and it needs to be stated in the affirmative. You need to say, "I'm striking this, I'm inserting that." It doesn't do any of that. That's what I told you before. It hasn't been done. It's still out of order. Mr. Frieden.
I have a, I guess, a language question. Is the motion incorrect saying open space? That's, I just want to know if that's the case. I don't want to pass something that's blatantly wrong.
Does anyone know the answer to that?
Darren Klein, KP Law through the moderator. Good evening, everyone. Before we get to good morning, the, the open space is not improper because recreation can come from open space. So although I understand the desire for the amendment by the chair, it's not legally necessary, in my opinion. Open space funds can be spent on recreation, so there's not a necessary amendment for it to be legally acceptable at all.
Thank you.
Anything else on A? Only A. A?
A to yourself.
I accept your A. Thank you.
It may not 100% be on A, but has to go to what the gentleman just stated. This is not the first time that the Parks Department has had a request on a field, which would have been open space. How we, we're beginning to think of it in another context, I'm not 100% clear as to why that was brought to an attention this evening because we've done it numerous other times where there wasn't any issue. So if there was a clarification on that or if I missed why we were trying to address that, I apologize, but I'm not clear on that.
I'm not sure any of us are clear on that. But having been advised that open space subsumes recreation that's included within open space, I think that's the clarification that we probably get to settle for. Anything else on A? Hearing none. All in favor of A under Article 14, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. A passes. Part B, is there any further discussion of part B? Out here first.
Perhaps Parks could address this. My understanding of the approval of $150 tonight.
$150,000?
Right.
Keeping it clear.
Now, if this doesn't get approved, or even if someone makes a motion to table this for another time, what is the next time that this can be brought to the town to have the money and the funds to actually fix the field?
Just the next meeting.
October, right? Apparently October. Next town meeting, unless there was a special town meeting. I don't know that we would want a special town meeting for that. Mr. Frieden.
I think the field needs to be worked on and it's, from the reading of the application, if that was what was approved, it sounded like they have sort of a phased approach where they're going to do the initial part and then bring a few designs out and see what the preference is to the public. I mean, they, I think we have to put a little bit of this in the hands of the Parks Department. If people want to go to Parks Department meetings, have at it. I mean, it's not a bad meeting, but go for it. But I don't, I just don't think it's worth pulling it back and just pushing off woodland. I mean, we can, I'll say the words, kick the can, but I mean, it just, the field's not getting better. We have to do something.
I wholeheartedly agree with you. Let's get some testing and funding done and let's get this moving. And I strongly encourage everybody to please go to the Parks Department and put your two cents in and make sure that Parks understands where you're coming from and what the town needs are and, and everything else to make sure that this actually gets done the correct way. But make sure that we get the money and the funding and the, the understanding of what our possibilities could, could be before we just not do anything on this. And I'm done. Thank you.
Mr. Burglum.
Thank you. I think everyone's seen the mixture field came out beautiful, but it was very expensive. So we're talking about investing $150,000 in a feasibility study. Are there any rough estimates? I mean, it's, it's much larger than the mixture field update. Are we talking a half a million, a million, and within that range? Do we know if there's enough monies in the open space fund to be able to pay for it?
Anybody know the answer to that?
I can answer the question through you, Mr. Moderator.
Please.
Neil Peterson, 67 Malden Street. So the $25,000 is for the feasibility study. The $125,000, that's the other part of the $150,000 before us right now, is to start working on the selected option produced by the feasibility study. So we would start working on a project that is not fully funded at all. And as for other sources of funds, the application was left blank.
She was before me.
Oh, go ahead.
Megan Giambetti, 15, Westland Circle. I have three kids in the school system who all play recreational sports, who are now all going to be at the middle school, playing middle school sports. Right now, Woodland, which is literally my front yard, basically right at the bottom of my street, is a mud pit most days. I would love to be able to send my kids, the neighborhood kids, down there to play, and we can't do that. We, I was at that meeting, the CBC meeting, and we went round and round, just like this. For hours, I think we're missing the bigger point here. The $25,000, yeah, $25,000 for the feasibility study is just for them to come out and take a look at our fields, measure it, tell us what is possible. Give us three options, of which I was under the impression that we were going to vote on. We were going to have committee meetings between softball, baseball, soccer, lacrosse, all of which I am involved with because my kids play. I think that if we vote to use the money, we're not even voting to use the money today. We're voting to bring it to ballot, right?
No, this is too appropriate.
You'd be starting work.
This is too appropriate.
To start work.
Then I vote yes. I mean...
We're not voting yet. But thank you. Mr. Peterson. I invite you to move your amendment at this point.
Thank you.
You should just read it.
All right. Hopefully for the last time, I move to amend Article 14 as follows. Delete the words "Woodland Park Design" and replace same with the words "Funding the Cost of a Feasibility Study With Respect to Potential Woodland Park Renovations," and delete $150,000 wherever it appears they're in and replace same with $25,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. She needs to keep the form.
It only applies if there is anything...
All right. Moved and seconded. Discussion of changing $150,000 to $25,000 and changing Woodland Park Design to feasibility study. So not $150,000, $25,000 feasibility study, not Woodland Park Design. That's what the motion to amend will do to part B that is before us. Is there discussion of the amendment?
Erin McKenzie.
Go ahead.
15 Townsend Drive. If we're limiting the money that we're going to vote on through the amendment to $25,000, all that's going to do is give us a design, which is just a drawing by an architect that says that we could potentially do this. But it doesn't give us anything else, which is why we needed the extra $100 to $125,000 so we could test what's going on with the dig or the backfill, the design development, and put all of these together to get a final sum of money to say, "This is what we actually need," and then come back in October and ask for that money as a whole sum. So I think that if we just use the $25,000 right now as amended, all we're getting is an architectural design of what could be, and we're not getting anything else to design to say, "This is what's at the field right now. This is, you know, Woodland School is actually still underneath this, and this is what it's going to cost to get rid of it. Or this is the sinkhole inside the tennis court, and this is how we're going to fix it." That's the money that we need. That's the extra $100,000 that we need to ensure that once we do this, we can present a whole final number with actual studied and documented ideas all down to present to the board again.
Thank you. Over here?
Lucy Scatti, Chino Ave. I have a couple of different comments. One, I just want to address what was just said through you. I believe it's a correction is needed. If you were to reject this amendment and approve the full $150,000, it's not just to present an option at the next town meeting. It would be actually starting work on a project that has not been fully funded. So by the time that it did come back to the town, it would probably be saying, "We started the work." My concern is that if you start the work, you're still going to have a mud pit because we're not necessarily, don't know if we're going to be finished with it by the end of the fall, so it's not going to be fixed by this year. And so we are still going to need more money because we really don't know how much all of this is going to cost. And I had a question for the Parks Department. So if what we're being encouraged to do is attend the Parks Department meeting, if everybody there is not in favor of, like, let's say there's three options, and the Parks Department says that they want A, or the commission, and everybody there wants option B, is it within the Parks Department authority to just overrule everybody and just go with the option that they want?
They've put on the warrant what they said they would put on the warrant, apparently.
No, my question is just like, because if we're being told, "Go to the Parks Department and give input on what you'd like to see happen," can we be overruled when we're at the Parks meeting? As opposed to here, where when we vote, we get to truly decide if we're going to go forward with it or not, and if we say no, then we can't be overruled. But if we're in the Parks Department voicing our opinion, I'm just wondering if we can be overruled by the Parks Department.
I think that's out of scope.
But it impacts what we vote here, because if we're being told, "Just approve the $150,000 and then come and tell us what you want when we go to the Parks meeting," they can still overrule us anyways. And so then this is really our only chance to truly give an opinion on whether or not you want to get work started on a project that is not funded. And so I am in favor of going with the amendment and limiting it to just the feasibility study, and hopefully by this fall, we'll be presented with options, and we can vote on them at the town meeting, and then we'll be able to get work started for next year.
Okay. Mr. Frieden was next.
Okay. I was going to say that going to 25 and then hoping to have something for the next town meeting, they will not be, I mean, I'm not on the board, and I don't know what engineer they might pick to do the proposal. There will be no proposal to bring in time for the next meeting. I mean, it just doesn't happen that fast. But they need to be able to be nimble and be able to get that proposal, have a hearing where you can go. This is not the right place for a hearing to decide on three options on a field perhaps or something like that. That has to be done in front of the Parks Commission, because they can have a whole meeting on it rather than just one article or something. I just think that, I don't want to say you have to have faith. It's not what I want to say about the Parks Commission, but they've done this a couple of times. They're going to be okay. It's what they're getting better at, and we got to let them get better at it. I mean, I would just say no on the amendment and let them go with the full $150 and do their process, because their process does include some reviews, includes hearings. It's what we're talking about. It's just that to slow it all down, it almost makes the feasibility study invalid, because it's going to be a year old. Nobody's going to be able to make sense of it.
Ms. Padoni.
So real quick, a few statements. Just as correction, no work is getting done. $25,000 are for site visits and drawing. The other $100,000, still no work is getting done. No change to the field. It's so they can dig test pits to figure out what's under it, so they can actually give true, what are the boundaries of the project, what it would really cost our town for drainage, what's under the tennis courts, because I've heard all different stories. But they also build virtual bid documents. The other question, there's no other funding in the application, because no one's going to give you a grant or funding on no information. So that I would just say, those are the two things. No work gets done for this money. It just tells us how much money it's going to cost us to get work started. And to be honest, it could cost a ton of money, and we could decide not to. The second part is, yes, you go to the Parks Commission. I know there was a statement made that mixture field wasn't what folks wanted. This process tells you what you can have there, and then you have an architect design it and do a cost bid. You can't then go to bid and then modify the bid every time a person or resident comes up, because the taxpayers can't afford that. So this here is no work. This is just telling us how much is it going to cost us to fix, repair, or replace what is there or what we can do with the property, and what it will cost us on drainage. This is not to dig up Woodland and replace the soccer field. So I just want to say, because we keep saying work, this is impossible. Without this also, you cannot go for a Parks grant. Without these items, for both of these, you cannot go for a Parks grant. This was a quote provided by a landscape architect to the Parks Commission as part of their meeting. The request here is completely fine. I think if the request is completely withdraw, you know, option B, but if you spend $25,000 now, you're not making it to October's meeting, that $150, as we've seen with every other project, could turn into $250, and now what you're doing is putting that back in front of us, the taxpayers, to do this same conversation about Woodland. I'm just very confused. I mean, it's you, my kids are growing up, right? My kids are done. If you don't want this done, these are your children playing in that area. That's exactly what it is. If you don't want it, I am completely for pulling it out, and you guys can come back next year at this time, or do $25,000 and come back for a quote for the $150, and then people are going to yell, "Why is it $185 now?" You mismanaged that. You could have done it. No, the people in this room mismanaged that and caused this, and they should be held accountable at your next meeting for it. There is no work here. This is just to get us to a point where we know how much, how long, and help us, new town administrator, apply for a grant, even be considered as competitive to any other town that's also applying for these same grants. But these are your children. They're the ones playing.
Anything new on the amendment to change to $25,000?
Jessica Olson, Bonnie V. Drive. Is it possible to move to vote on this amendment now?
You can call the question.
Yes, I'd like to do that, please.
I will take that as a motion to end debate. Is there a second?
I second.
I didn't hear who seconded. All right. Motion to end debate.
No discussion.
There's no discussion of, do we continue discussing? If you want to keep discussing, just vote no. If you want to end debate, vote yes. So the motion before us is to end debate on Article 14B. All in favor of ending debate, please say aye.
No.
Opposed.
No.
The ayes have it, no more debate. We will now vote the amendment, because that's the last thing moved.
Ms. Moderator, a point of order. We were actually voting on the amendment, not on the article.
Yeah, I was just saying that. I don't know if we need to do that again. Do we need to do that again?
Well, what is the motion?
Hang on.
Can you read it?
Call the vote. The matter pending.
We just voted on not amending and calling the vote on amendment. So amendment's done.
We, I misstated, I misstated the motion. The motion was to end debate on the amendment. I misspoke, okay? So I think you guys understood anyway, but the amendment now is before you.
For clarification, if we are voting on the amendment, then we're not voting on what it is, as is written.
The question in chief is part B. There's an amendment pending, proposed, moved, seconded, to change it to $25,000 and change Woodland Park Design to something like feasibility study. It was read into the record. That amendment is what is currently before us. That is what we just ended debate on.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
So the amendment talks about $25,000. That's aside from number A, which is also 25?
That's correct.
So I understand we did it. So the total sum will be 50?
Right, but 25 is already approved.
I got that.
We're only voting the additional 25.
Thank you.
Okay? If the amendment passes, we have to vote the amendment first, okay? So all in favor of the amendment, changing it 150 to 25, changing Woodland Park Design to feasibility study, signify your acceptance of the amendment by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Amendment fails. The question in chief, $150,000 and without changing Woodland Park Design, is still before us. You want to keep talking about that? You want to move that one too? Somebody move the question.
Kelsey Hoog, 29, 33.
Hang on. You're not recognized to speak yet. Don't take it personally. So there's a motion to call the question. Is there a second? Mr. O'Dea, seconds. Thank you. All right. We're discussing, are we going to end debate on part B? So we ended debate on the amendment. We voted the amendment down. Now we're back to B as written, and we are calling the question. Right? Did I say that? So there's no debate on, there's no debate on ending debate, okay? So if you are in favor of stopping talking about B and just voting on B, this is not to vote on B. This is to stop talking about it, okay? So if you want to stop talking about B, you're going to vote yea or yes. If you want to keep talking about B, vote no, and maybe we'll keep talking about it if enough people agree with you. So ending debate on B, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Debate is over. We will now vote on B. Isn't procedure wonderful? So A was already approved. This is a majority vote. It's to approve the $150,000 and Woodland Park Design, the way that it's written, without any amendment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. B passes.
I'm okay. I got the whole thing. Both people have to hold on.
Catered. Do you want some circus peanuts?
Do you want some chicken and peanuts? Want me to do a motion?
Thanks for your patience. We still have a number of articles to go, and I'd like to know how late you'd like to stay. And if you're not, if you're not interested in staying late, then we, we might adjourn, and we'd have to pick it up.
No.
No? Keep going? Keep going. Article fifteen, except mass general laws, Chapter forty-one, Section nineteen K.
I move the town vote to approve Article fifteen as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or taking any other action relative thereto.
Is there a second?
The explanation is, the article recognizes the effort of the town clerk to become a certified. To the Massachusetts Town Clerk Association to become certified, to become certified, the town clerk must complete, of courses offered by the Massachusetts Town Clerk, and have a minimum of three years' experience to become certified.
Town boards and committees?
Any others?
Hearing none. Any comment or question from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Article fifteen passes. Congratulations, Madam Town Clerk.
Mr. Minister?
Yes.
Could we possibly, unless the public raises, says they want this, could we pass over the explanations, since you have them in the handout? Unless someone opposes it or wants the explanation read out?
All right. I'm going to take that counsel, and if you want an explanation, you're going to need to ask for it when there's public comment, okay? Just to keep things moving. Article sixteen, except mass general laws, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five K. Is there a motion?
There are action relative thereto.
Did you mean approve? Not appropriate?
Oh, approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Words and committees?
Any words?
Thanks. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sixteen passes. Seventeen, authorization to amend general bylaws?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to amend the general bylaw as printed in the article seventeen of the warrant, deleting the words or take any other actions relative thereto.
Is there a second? Thank you.
So there.
Town boards and committees, recommendations?
Bylaw committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Article seventeen is approved. Article eighteen, except mass general laws, Chapter one-forty S, one-thirty-nine C. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve Article eighteen as printed in the warrant, deleting the words or take any other actions relative thereto.
Thank you. Town boards and committees?
Bylaw committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article eighteen passes. Article nineteen, authorization to amend the general bylaws. This is for kennel licenses. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move the town vote to amend the general bylaw as printed in Article nineteen of the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Thank you. Town boards and committees?
Bylaw committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Go ahead.
Andy Cowan, twenty-seven Rivington Drive. Do you know of any normal people in town that are, have more than four dogs that suddenly have to get a kennel license?
No, you're out of order. You're asking for a declaration of normality. I'm sorry.
Okay.
But are there people who have more?
Non-commercial people?
Clear.
Two.
I know of two families that have reached out regarding.
Thank you. Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Article nineteen passes. Article twenty, authorization to amend the general bylaws?
I move the town vote to amend the general bylaws as printed in the Article twenty of the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Second.
Thank you. Town boards and committees?
Bylaw committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Hearing none. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Article twenty passes. Article twenty-one, authorization to amend the general bylaws?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to amend the general bylaws. Article twenty-five, non-criminal disposition of bylaw violations, comma, Article twenty-six, property address numbering, by deleting the words "fire chief" or "from the column titled enforcing person."
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
I'd like to give you an explanation.
Go ahead.
So this amendment designates the building inspector as the sole non-criminal disposition enforcement officer. The fire chief is only responsible for assigning the address numbers as set in the Article twenty.
Thank you. So the fire chief assigns the number but doesn't enforce. The building inspector enforces the failure to display it properly. Okay?
Bylaw committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Any others? Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Twenty-one passes. Article twenty-two, authorization to amend the general bylaws?
I move the town vote to amend the general bylaw as printed in Article twenty-two of the warrant, deleting the words or take any other action relative thereto.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We want to explain this one, or we want to just move on?
Bylaw committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Question or comment from the public? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Twenty-two is passed. Article twenty-three, authorization to amend the zoning bylaws?
I move to vote the town amend the zoning bylaws as set forth in Article twenty-three of the warrant and printed in Appendix C.
Second.
Thank you.
I'm dying to give an explanation.
Please do.
All right.
Can we not?
Oh, never mind. Forget it.
Does anybody want to see the map? He has a laser pointer. You do? Sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead. We're doing it. I'll get the map. The people speak.
Do you want the map? Oh, no, I'll go get the map. It's tiny, though. I was thinking it would be up there.
Move to ta, sorry, James Kingsley, nine Lisa. Move to table and do twenty-four while he's getting the map.
Huh? What? Before we do that, is there anybody who's actually going to move twenty-four? We, we, it's, it's out of order right now, until we table this, but I don't think there's anybody to move twenty-four. And so if you want to move to pass it over, as soon as we find out the wonders of the new map, be my guest. Mr. Freedon?
Oh, we're back to it? Oh, sorry. Didn't mean to hold it back.
We, we, we never got away from it. There wasn't anywhere to go. We can't reconsider nine anymore, so.
Okay, good. The bylaw here is, is really just to allow people who have houses in the FEMA-declared floodplain to be eligible for flood insurance, federal flood insurance. The, so up here is a map. Here's the new map, but here's the map that you really want to look at. This map shows in red where the floodplain expanded and where it retracted in green, but really the red is what you're concerned about. It's, it's mostly retracting, but there are some properties behind, oh, Rivington Drive. It used to be a stream. Now it's in the floodplain. I think that's the only people that are concerned, should take a look. It, it might not matter, but it is. I just want you to be eligible for the federal insurance, so pass it or don't.
Does any, does anyone want to come up and see?
Or does anyone, the map's online, too.
Or you can walk it back, because he just ran off.
Mark, maybe you could put it on the piano, and people can take a look.
He asked about Rivick, Rivington Drive area, and this gentleman wanted to see it. So can you bring it back up so he can see it?
So, due to the extraordinary nature of the exhibit, allowing people to come look at it. I'm sure this is going to be very quick, because there's nobody to move twenty-four, so. Question?
Thank you to the gentleman for bringing the map, his, his efforts. I appreciate this late hour. Thank you.
Thank you. Expressions of gratitude are good. While that's going on, we can entertain board or committee recommendations or opinions, except I think Mark is on the planning board, so.
Planning board endorse this article?
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Further question?
I have a question.
Huh? Go ahead. Oh, Mr.
Mr. Moderator. Planning board endorse this article?
Thank you.
Paul Robichaud, eighty Temple Street. Just a question on some of the language around recreational vehicles. It was, the way I interpret it or read it, it, it's like anything that has like a chassis, but is it tow, is towable?
It is towable.
Is that inclusive of like a small four-wheeler? Because like, it says you have to store it up on blocks, or?
It, it, it's more of a, like a trailed, trailer that you could camp in.
Okay.
What they're concerned about is something that if it was parked in the floodplain and a flood came through, this would float up and go to whatever, hit a neighbor, or block the water and divert the nu, the water to somewhere, somewhere else. So it's, it's sort of a, I think it's four-hundred-square-foot base, so it's not really, I, I tried to correct the language. They didn't want me to. Because they call it a recreational vehicle, but it's really like an RV or something like that, or a, you know, something on a chassis that can move itself or be towed.
Self-propelled.
Self-propelled or towed.
Thank you.
But it's a res, you know, something you could live in that's big, over four-hundred square feet.
And that's in addition to, you have to be in that newly identified.
Only if it's in that spot. It only matters if it's in that spot.
Thank you.
Further question or comment from the public? Hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Pedoni.
I would like to thank Mark for all the work he put into this, because you guys don't see the justification, but he did a lot for this, and I'm.
Thank you. Further comment? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That was unanimous, which is more than two-thirds. Is there anybody who wants to move twenty-four?